...whose condition we deduce from the pauses that occur between wars. Because unfortunately, while it takes two to come to an accommodation and decide not to fight, it only takes one side or one person to decide to pick a fight. As I mentioned, Veterans Day is coming up in the beginning of November, and that's when we honor everybody who has put themselves between our nation and war's desolation. So I want to open this meeting tonight in honor of all those brave men and women who stood ready and stood up to defend us. So when you say the pledge in a couple of seconds here, please remember them, and remember all the men and women currently serving in our armed services, because they are the ones who in large part made it possible for those words that we say in the pledge to actually mean something. So if you'll rise and join me in the pledge, I would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Changes to the order of the agenda. Does either staff or my colleagues have proposed changes to the order of the agenda?
Chair Olbert, I have one. I request that we move item number 11 to just before item number 10.
That sounds like a good idea, and we'll do that. Thank you. And please remind me when we get there, if I forget to have moved it, that we said we would move it. Any other changes? If not, we will proceed with that modified agenda. Next item is report from closed session. Greg?
There's no report from the closed session earlier this evening.
All right. Moving on, next item is presentations. 5A is we're going to receive a presentation on the San Mateo County Airport's Voluntary Good evening. Gretchen, right?
Yes.
Good. I don't read mine, as they wrote it out on a piece of paper for me, so...
Thank you very much. I'm Gretchen Kelly. I'm the airport manager at the San Carlos Airport and the Halfing Bay Airport, but tonight I'll be talking about San Carlos Airport. Thank you very much for inviting me to speak. I also have Jim Porter, the Director of Public Works, is here, and Michael Byrne, the Assistant Airport Manager, so they're here. They can help answer any questions if anyone has questions after the presentation. We're really proud of our voluntary noise abatement program. Very briefly, the noise abatement procedures have been around since the 1970s, and they were designed by the Federal Aviation Administration. Our noise abatement program has been around since the 1990s, and it was designed by our Pilots Association with input from the community, the FAA, the county. But we've revamped it recently, and we're really excited about the changes to our program. That's what we're going to talk about tonight. Get the right button. There we go. Very brief background on the airport. We're a public use airport. The FAA has designed us as a public use general aviation reliever airport. Basically, that just means we relieve congestion from the big airports in the area. Palo Alto, Hayward, Reed Hillview, Halfing Bay, we're all general aviation reliever airports. We've been in our current location since 1950. Prior to that, we were across the highway where Best Buy is located now. So we've been in our current location for a long time. We're a county-owned and operated airport. We have about 400 aircraft based at the airport, about 20 aeronautical businesses, and our annual operations and operation is a takeoff and landing range between 95,000 and 130,000 a year. So it ends up being a couple hundred takeoffs and landings a day. So we're a small airport, but we're a busy little airport. Just quickly, the types of activities we have recently. Power restoration helicopter flights. We've been having a lot of those in the last few weeks. Law enforcement. The Sheriff's Air Squadron for the county is based at the airport. We have a lot of air ambulance and medical flights. Late night organ transplant flights, patient transport, post-disaster relief, public benefit flights, things like Doctors Without Borders, Pilots in Paws. You might see on our Facebook page, we'll be posting pictures of airplanes, you know, full of rescue dogs. We also have flight training. We have four flight schools based at the airport. Charter flights, and a lot of our tenants use their aircraft for business-related flights. I think the stat is more than 30% of our flights are business-related. And this is what you invited me to talk about. In 2016, our county board supervisors initiated the Aircraft Disturbance Study. This was in response to community concern about noise. And the Aircraft Disturbance Study included best practice study, a review of our policies, an analysis of some operational changes, the addition of landing fees, and an FAA-funded Part 150 noise study. And I'll talk a little bit about each of these very briefly. First, the best practices management plan. So we got some experts together to help us conduct a best practice management study. And these are the outcomes. This is what happened as a result of that study, is we hired a full-time airport communications specialist. And many of you have met Davey Howard, our airport communications specialist. He's usually the one up here giving our presentations. He's actually attending a noise, airport noise conference in Seattle right now, trying to keep up on new and emerging issues in airport noise management. We've developed community and pilot outreach programs, which I'll talk about briefly. We have launched a new noise information website, which we're really proud of, and it includes our new marketing materials, our video series, which we think is really innovative and helpful and informational, educational. We updated our airport minimum business standards, which if you want to be in a aeronautical business and operate out of the San Carlos Airport, you have to meet a threshold, which we reset recently with our minimum business standards. And that was with the help of the businesses, the Business Association, the Pilots Association at the airport, a team of experts, and community input as well. We implemented the Airport Vector System, which is a flight management system which helps us track noise complaints, track aircraft, and also implement landing fees at the airport for charter flights. We increased our social media presence. We conducted a noise study with FAA funding, and we conducted a six-month operational test of the Bayside Visual Approach. So this is just a quick snapshot of the Vector Airport System. This is a behind-the-scenes, just look at how we use it. This is a few-hour shot of flights in and out. So the green is takeoff flights, and the red is landing. So somebody calls in a noise complaint. We used to, you know, answering machine would take the call, we would transcribe it, and then we'd look it up on the Internet, but we couldn't look it up for 24 hours because the flight information wasn't available on the Internet for 24 hours. Then we would put it into an Excel spreadsheet, and then call the person back. Well, now Vector does all that for us. It correlates, it transcribes the phone calls, or takes the web form complaint, puts it into a spreadsheet, correlates the airplane flight with the complaint, graphs it for us, and finds trends for us, and then automatically gives us the information. So it's a lot more efficient. We're able to respond to people faster with better information. And it also tracks charter flights so that we can charge landing fees. We charge $75 for every charter flight that lands at the airport. And that was a community request that we implemented. This is the old noise abatement handout, so this was before we updated. And you can see it's old, it doesn't have a lot of information for pilots, it's not something that you really want to pick up and read, and it was last updated in 2006. Now, the procedures haven't changed since the '70s. The program has changed quite a bit. Our outreach has changed, but the procedures, as the community has built up around the airport, the procedures themselves haven't changed. The names have changed because the Bay Meadows racetrack is gone, so that can't be called the Bay Meadows Departure anymore. Now it's called the Hillsdale Departure. But the procedures are the same. This is our new handout, and I'm showing you the front page. On the back is a text telling pilots how to fly them. There's also a QR code on our new handout, so pilots can just use their cellphone, look it up on their phones, read about our procedures, hopefully before they come to the airport, so that they know how to get into the airport quietly, depart the airport quietly. But this one, it gives a lot more information. It's more, sorry, colorful. Oh, sorry, can't hear me. And this one is newer, better, more eye-catching, right? Same arrivals and departures, but it has a lot more information for pilots, and it's a lot easier to read, and definitely more modern. And I'm going to show you a very short version of one of our flight-friendly videos. We have 11 videos in our new innovative video series. We're really proud of our video series. The video series is on our website, and pilots can watch it before they come to the airport, but you don't have to be a pilot to watch it. And it shows you, from a pilot's perspective, how to fly our noise abatement procedures. So the theory behind it is a pilot would watch the video before they come to the airport, see the local landmarks, watch how the procedure is flown, then come to the airport and fly quietly, fly friendly, right? So I'm going to show you the overhead arrival video, a shortened one-minute version. And this is the flight track. This is an actual flight track of somebody flying the overhead arrival. So they're coming from the west, from like Crystal Springs reservoir, and the tower's going to tell them to fly overhead the airport, report midfield at 1,200 feet, then enter a right downwind for runway 30. That's a bunch of pilot talk, right? So I'll show you the video, but this is the track that the aircraft's going to fly. And those red dots, those are put in our vector system, those are gates. So we have gates, and then we run reports, and if an aircraft goes outside the gates, we know, and then we can send them a friendly reminder letter saying, hey, remember, we want you to fly this, not that. This is the overhead arrival video, and let's see. I don't know, Crystal, if you have to click on it for me?
You can click it.
Okay, good. All good. This aircraft is arriving from Crystal Springs. You can see the airport in the middle of the screen there.
Here, we align ourselves to cross over the midpoint of the runway at 1,200.
Thank you for watching the San Carlos Airport video series, Overhead Arrival. Be sure to watch the other videos in our Fly Friendly series. Have a nice day, and remember, fly safe, fly friendly.
So obviously, that was a shortened version of the video. Now, one thing about that video that I didn't point out while the aircraft was flying, because I didn't want to talk over the narration, but the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Association pointed out to us that if aircraft flew a little bit to the south and arrived over Britton Avenue rather than over their neighborhood, they'd be flying over, they'd still be flying over the midpoint of the runway, but they'd be flying over closer to Home Depot than the residential areas. So we've been working with, that's something that's really hard to describe to pilots that aren't local, right? That difference. But we've been working with the local flight schools and local pilots to have them track over the control tower and over Britton Avenue when they fly this overhead arrival, and that seems to be helping. So that was a great suggestion from the GESC. And this aircraft, although the camera was on the left wing, its flight track was right over Britton Avenue. So that's been a very helpful suggestion. This is the front page of our Voluntary Noise Abatement Program new website, so our new noise information website. And it has things like Airport Noise 101, general information about airport noise, a glossary of terms. There's a lot of acronyms in aviation. Frankly asked questions, because there's a lot of questions that people ask us kind of over and over. Are you a commercial airport? Things like that. Data trends, so you can click on tracking the noise, and you can find out how many takeoffs and landings there have been in the last 90 days. The video series, the Voluntary Noise Abatement Procedures, FAA contact information, things like that. And I put the hyperlink at the bottom, but we're very open to suggestions, as it's a new website, so if anyone has ideas for how to improve this, we're open to those. And then these are some of the current and ongoing outreach efforts. So Davey Howard, our communications specialist, is out quite often at pilot seminars, presenting to local pilots at community events, and trying to get the word out about our fly-friendly program. And the buy-in has been pretty good, actually. He was speaking with the Sheriff's Air Squadron recently, and they were very interested. You know, they fly a lot of circles, and sometimes they have to fly in a certain location because that's where the mission is, the law enforcement mission or the fire mission. But when they're on their way there and back, they want to be a good neighbor, so they invited Davey to come talk to their group. Getting our materials out, we've been sending the materials to local airports recently, and airports are starting to call us and say, well, how did you do the videos? How did you do this? We want to do it. The more local airports buy into this type of program, the better, because their aircraft transition our area as well. Collaborating with the GESC, like I said, they've been great partners in this program, and other community groups. Reminder letters. We keep softening the language in our reminder letters, and we keep getting better response, which is interesting, right? So I'm just going to read one line from our reminder letter. So, you know, your airplane did this on this day, blah, blah, blah. Flying the noise abatement procedures as published helps us be a responsible member of the community by minimizing our noise impact on residents who live near the San Carlos Airport, and then blah, blah, blah. And we include their flight track in a handout. And now pilots call us and say, how should I do it? Where before, they used to call us angry, now they call us and say, well, how am I supposed to do it? Can I come and talk to you? We're getting a really positive response from this tone of letter. And we're planning more engagement events where we can bring the community out to the airport, maybe let people fly simulators, fly the noise abatement procedures on the simulator, do some airport tours, and we're planning to expand our program. So we're excited about this, and we're planning to do more with the community and continue to outreach. So, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Gretchen.
Absolutely.
I have one public speaker card for this. If there's anybody else who would like to comment on this, I'll give them a chance to do so after we call up one. Gretchen, you can sit down and then come back if there are questions.
Absolutely.
So I have a card here from Dimitri Vandelos. You know, I know you remember the drill, Dimitri, about the two minutes and stuff, right?
Yeah, I know. I'd appreciate it if you, don't cut me at 90. I'm kidding. Nice to see you all in the UCD Council. I think this is the first meeting I've been to. I wanted to express thanks to Gretchen and the entire airport staff for working on these new noise abatement procedures. I think it's very helpful. It's been a long road, and it's taken quite a bit of time to get our points across. It hasn't always been easy, but we're really pleased that these new, the new site is up, that there's new training, and more sensitivity to the issues that have been plaguing our neighborhood for the past five or so years. With that said, there's still a lot of work to be done. We're still getting helicopters flying at extremely low altitudes. There was one this evening that was about 65 feet over homes. We had a number of what I would describe as FAA violations yesterday. So these things are happening. I understand it's a work in progress. We need to keep moving forward, but there are serious safety issues and concerns, and that's been our number-one issue. So as you can imagine, when you have aircraft flying below FAA regulations over homes, it is a traumatic event. I've had neighbors express how their children have been very fearful. And if you guys are aware, you should look at the general aviation safety statistics versus commercial air. It's a significantly different story. So hopefully, the city, along with our community and the airport and county, can work together and figure out ways to help continue to make things better. Thanks.
Thank you, Dimitri. Next up is Scott Marsters. Good evening, Scott.
Thank you. So I also want to say thank you to the airport staff and Gretchen and all of the individuals at the airport who have been working with us for at least the last, I'd say, three years. We've made significant progress. Like Dimitri said, there are some things that we still need to work on, and we're looking forward to continuing to work with airport staff. And helicopters being one of the more recent issues for us, and one of the things that I'm particularly concerned about is sort of this idea of sort of commuter helicopters, where people come from San Jose or come from other areas, and instead of driving, they're taking helicopter rides over to San Carlos and then getting a ride from there, because it saves them a significant amount of time. And though I don't have a huge issue with people doing that, I do have an issue with the patterns that they are arriving in. And so one of the things I'm hoping is that we have all these airplane patterns, and that maybe we can begin to guide the helicopters into a different pattern also that allow them not to come over the neighborhood at such a low level. And so I think it's something that, working together, we can solve. It's great to see the city, it's great to see the county, it's great to see the airport and the residents all working together. So thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on this item? All right. Let's go to council questions. Or actually, Jeff, I see you have your light on. But not any longer. Sarah.
Thank you, Chair. Gretchen, I have a question for you. Thank you for your presentation. I learned a lot. I just wanted to build on the comments from our community members tonight and ask if there is a repeat. I understand the value of a friendly letter, and hopefully that changes behavior, but if there are violators who continue to do the same wrong flight pattern over and over, what happens then?
Fortunately, we don't have a lot of repeat offenders. Generally, it's visiting pilots and transient pilots from out of the area. We don't have a lot. It's very rare that we even send a letter to a based pilot. It's student pilots and transient pilots generally. So if it's a student pilot, we go and talk to the flight school and let them know that, you know, we send a letter, but we also talk to the flight school and let them know that, hey, one of your students. And our businesses take noise abatement very seriously. Generally, as soon as they get the letter, they're in our office holding the letter saying, I want to talk about this. We talked to the student, we talked to the aircraft owner, you know, they are very proactive in responding. And it's rare, generally, visiting pilots will call and say, this was really confusing. Noise abatement is hard if you're not familiar with the area, which is why we're trying to reach visiting pilots, non-familiar pilots, with our video series and our marketing materials. It's rare that people say, I just don't want to comply, right? It's rare that people say, I just don't want to comply, right? In that case, we would invite them to come down and talk to them, you know, please come down to the airport, take you on a tower tour, we will take you on a tour of the airport, and then we talk to them about the seriousness of noise abatement. And for us, it is being a good neighbor and also the future of the airport, right? Because we need to coexist with our neighbors. And generally, that, you know, is enough for people to see that this is important.
Thank you. Is that process the same with helicopter pilots, or is it different?
It is the same, yes.
Okay.
The challenge for, and I think Scott's idea, I think, we, Mike and I were recently at a conference where someone was talking about these commuter helicopters. We haven't seen them at San Carlos Airport. And we don't have, we're so small, I don't know if we will, but we know that there's chatter about them in the area. So I think Scott's suggestion is a good one.
Thank you.
Laura.
Thank you, Chair, Albert. And Gretchen, thank you for coming tonight with your team. I know we had an opportunity to meet over the summer with the neighbors and learn more about the program, so, and that was great because it was at least an hour, if not more, time, so, and you can't pack all of, you know, what you shared with me in this five minutes, but I, a couple of questions for you that stood out to me from that meeting was that you described to us, and your team described to me, the difference between the role of the county, the FAA, and the pilots. So we would love for you to explain that. And then if you could also talk a little bit about what you've observed so far as the impact of this program and what you see as next steps, and whether or not there's any other jurisdiction that is taking this measure in their community, or if this is a novel approach.
Sure, absolutely. This is, other airports have noise abatement programs, voluntary noise abatement programs, but this type of video series and marketing is innovative. We haven't seen this before, right? So we think that we're being very cutting-edge in our outreach and trying to reach transient pilots and non-base pilots, which is hard for every airport to reach, right? And that's why we're getting so much attention from other airports. They're calling us and saying, we want to do this too, right? And we're happy to share, right, what we've done. We're really happy to share, we're proud of it, and we're happy to tell other airports what we've done because it benefits everyone, right? Because some of the complaints that we get from Greater East San Carlos, quite a bit, actually, are aircraft just transitioning our airspace that don't take off our land at our airports. So the more airports we can reach, the better. The challenge with jurisdiction is just like Highway 101 that goes through the county, right? It goes through the county, but the county doesn't have, you know, control over who drives on Highway 101. So the county owns and operates the airport, but it's on the ground, but airspace is completely run by the Federal Aviation Administration. So the county unfortunately doesn't have any control over airspace. It's part of the national airspace system. And the San Carlos Airport, even though we're a small airport, we are part of that larger airport system. And the FAA has, you know, has Congress, and 1990 made a rule that airports can't restrict through noise abatement, right? So we can't say you can't land or take off during these hours, certain aircraft can't use the airport, airport, local jurisdictions aren't allowed to restrict airports because of the larger system, right? Because we relieve congestion in the larger system. So I know that's frustrating for residents, right? Because it's a county airport, they want the county to make a curfew or restrict traffic or change flight paths, but we control the airport on the ground. And so that's a source of frustration for the county and the residents. But through this program, we think that we can get voluntary compliance. Initially, so we used to monitor just by watching airplanes fly the procedures, and then we implemented the vector system, and now we can watch actual flight tracks. So initially, we had a drop from like 99% compliance to 94% because we're using actual flight tracks. And now we're back up to 97% using actual flight tracks. So we think that this program is responsible for that. So we think that we're trending definitively in the right direction.
Thank you, Gretchen, and for bringing your team in as well. I had a few questions, and actually, one of them sort of dovetails off what you, I think we were just talking there, the statistics you were citing. So you're back to around, you said 97% compliance? That's with the voluntary noise abatement program, essentially? I don't, I didn't see on your website when you had it flashed up there whether or not that was there, but displaying that statistic might be something useful to do.
That's a good idea.
So people can be aware of it, and as you update it, they'll know if some changes happen. Do you have any insight into what is causing some of the low, I'll call them low-altitude helicopter flights that Dimitri was referring to?
I haven't looked in the last couple of days, so I don't know for sure. I'm guessing probably PG&E flights the last few days. We've had a lot of PG&E helicopter activity at both of our airports. PG&E is, there's a lot of PG&E trucks on the ground and PG&E helicopters, and there's personnel getting on and off the helicopters, and equipment getting on and off the helicopters, their fueling at the airport, and so I think that that's what's going on this week, is power restoration flights.
Would power restoration flights be subject to different height limitations, or is it sort of independent of what the purpose of the flight is? It's just, if it's a helicopter flying, it's supposed to be at a certain height?
Helicopters have different rules than aircraft. They don't have, they don't have the same minimum altitude requirements that aircraft have. So if they're doing power line patrols, they might not, they might need to fly lower so that they can inspect the power lines, you know, or replace power lines.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. It also occurs to me that, because unfortunately, power line inspections are going to become the new normal for quite a number of years, I think, until they finish hardening the system, there may be an opportunity that that's another class of pilots that you guys could reach out to directly, just because they probably do not generally fly in and out of the airport, they're just sort of assigned there because they're working there, so that might be something to follow up with.
Absolutely.
My last question is one name that didn't come up in any part of your presentation. I'm just curious what the status of it is. Surf Air.
They're still operating at the airport, but at a much reduced level. So the last time we checked, I believe they have 23 to 25 flights a week, that's arrivals. So previously, they had that many in a day, so it's significantly reduced. They don't have any flights on Saturdays, and they have a couple on Sundays, and then three to five arrivals a day during the week. So they're still there, but they're operating at a much lower level.
And as I recall, some of that, some at least of that reduction may have been due to some steps the county took in terms of how the airport was being operated.
Yeah, certainly not restricting, right? Because we're not allowed to do that, but some policy changes may have contributed to that, yes. And I think they're spreading the wealth around to other Bay Area airports, which is good.
I appreciate you sharing that, both those pieces of information. I'll just say that to the extent, not necessarily Surf Air-related, but if other issues come up in the future, that kind of creative, out-of-the-box thinking could be greatly appreciated by the community. And compliant with the law, which is even more important.
Absolutely, yes.
Any other questions from the DIAS? Well, thank you, Gretchen, very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that'll move us on to our second presentation tonight. We are receiving a presentation on housing legislation in Sacramento from our legislative representative, Amy Brown. Good evening, Amy.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you for having me. It's always nice to visit folks who actually have to implement these great ideas in Sacramento, so I appreciate you indulging me. I was asked to come give sort of a general overview on really what has happened in terms of housing up in Sacramento, and some of the bills that have passed, while some of the other proposals have not passed, and then predict sort of what's going to happen next year as 2020 hits, and juxtapose the housing crisis that Newsom has laid out with the wildfire crisis that we have here in California. That is going to occupy a significant amount of our time. So these are the six issues I'm going to briefly run through and then pause and see if you guys have questions. But before we get to sort of an overview as to what happened, you know, this is Governor Newsom's first year, and boy, has he taken on a lot. In fact, when he was first sworn in, he made a statement through his original budget proposal that he wanted California to build 3.5 million new housing units by 2025. That's 500,000 per year. It's a lofty goal, and what he has seen in short order is that that may not be a feasible goal for a couple of reasons. One of the things he wanted to do, it's sort of an incentive, it's a stick-carrot approach that he has laid out, that the legislature hasn't necessarily agreed with this year. So one of them was tying the regional housing needs assessment requirements to SB1 funds. And if you recall, SB1 was the transportation tax that was passed by the legislature a couple of years ago. A lot of those tax increases go to streets and roads locally. There was, that proposal was met with a significant amount of opposition with legislative leaders in the Capitol. So the Budget Committee members said, you know, that we pass that, it should be part and separate from any housing requirements, let's keep the transportation projects and the housing requirements separate. That proposal died in budget negotiations this year. I, you know, indicated that it's dead for now. I imagine those types of incentives or sticks will rise when the legislature reconvenes on January the 6th. And in fact, they're out right now. So the governor had until October 13th to sign or veto any bills. The legislature went home to their respective districts September 13th, and so we really have a little bit of leeway to sort of develop what is going to occur when they return on January 6th. Briefly, you know, he allocated, and the legislature approved, 1.3 billion plus tax increments for low and moderate housing. He, as most of you have known, he did sue the city of Huntington Beach because they weren't producing enough affordable housing. It's a very interesting debate, because as we all know, cities don't produce housing. You can provide incentives and streamline processes, but you guys are not the ones to actually build housing. And that has been a huge issue as these issues come to fruition in the state Capitol. The other thing that the governor is looking at doing, and there were a couple of bills that are in here, is looking at excess state property and streamlining that property for affordable housing, transitional housing, and supportive housing for our homeless population. I would say the biggest and most controversial issue that we had in the housing space was SB 50. For those of you who need a little refresher, SB 50 would have required local governments to provide sort of specified equitable communities incentives to developers to build in job-rich areas and transit-rich areas. And one of the things that the bill SB 50 proposed to do was have the state housing and community development department develop sort of protocols and designations and produce maps of what would be considered a job-rich area. And then the transit-rich area would be defined as a half-mile radius of a rail station or a ferry station, and then a fourth-mile radius from a high-quality bus corridor. This was monumentally controversial with local governments because, for practical purposes, a lot of that language didn't fit with some of the other communities outside of the bill author's district. Senator Weiner represents San Francisco, a very different city than a lot of other cities in California. So the argument was this one-size-fits-all through SB 50 needed to continue to be tinkered with and talked about. And why don't we look at an incentive-based program rather than usurping local control, which was some of the arguments that were made. Now, remember, this is the second time Senator Weiner has proposed this type of legislation. Last year, he proposed AB 827. That bill didn't get out of its first committee. What they did last year was, last year they had transportation and housing as one policy committee. This year, they separated those out. They have a transportation committee and a different Senate Housing Committee. The President of the Senate appointed Senator Weiner to the Housing Committee. So you would arguably think that that would get a little more political support, and it did. It passed the Senate Housing Committee as well as the Senate Governance and Finance Committee, very controversial, lots of debate. When it went to the Senate Appropriations Committee, the Chair, Senator Portantino, held the bill. So when I say it's dead for now, it's technically not dead because we are in the, we just finished the first year of a two-year bill cycle. So come January, we're going to hit the ground running, and SB 50 is going to be resurrected. How? We don't know. We're continuing to have conversations with Senator Weiner. I think he needs to look at what types of revisions he needs to make to that bill in order to get it passed. And he's having those discussions in the fall. We have, several members of your delegation has sat down with Senator Weiner, will continue to do that to see if, what he's thinking in terms of amendments, if any. Let's see, there have been several SEQA exemption proposals. There are two significant bills that have passed over the objections of some environmental advocates up in Sacramento, one of them being SB 450. This exempts SEQA for hotel conversions and motel conversions to transitional housing. That was signed, it received significant support through both houses of the legislature, which is a very turning of the tide. There hasn't been a lot of SEQA exemption legislation since, you know, for decades, essentially. And this year, with regard to our housing crisis and homelessness crisis throughout the state, they're looking at ways to streamline the SEQA process. The other one that was significant was AB 1197, and that exempts SEQA in LA for shelters and supportive housing until 2025, so it does have an exemption. Now, this, there were several accessory dwelling unit bills that were signed into law. Just so you know, we are keeping a close eye on the Housing and Community Development Department because they are going to be issuing regulations in order to implement the bills I'm about ready to go through very briefly. AB 68 prohibits an ordinance from imposing requirements on minimum lot size. AB 587 allows an ADU to be sold or conveyed separately from the primary residence to a qualified buyer, which is an interesting debate. You can basically separate out the two houses and sell them separately. AB 670 prohibits housing associations from banning construction or use of an ADU or junior ADU, and allows the HOAs to impose reasonable rules on the construction. AB 881 provides that if a local agency adopts an ADU ordinance in areas zoned for single-family or multi-family use, it must designate areas where the ADUs may be permitted, like parking size, and require ADUs to comply with setbacks, et cetera. And that was sort of a package deal because they wanted, this was sort of the bookend of the sort of ADU debate as it was going on before the legislature. SB 13 provides that an ADU may be attached to or located with an attached garage, a storage area, or other structures that do not exceed a specific amount of the total floor area. Again, those bills were signed as a package. Same day, the governor rolled out, saying he supported these bills. There were several bills that went further in terms of taking away a local government's jurisdiction to manage ADUs, but these were the ones that made their way through the legislature. Again, HCD is developing those regulations now. I wanted to mention the By Right Housing Bill. This was actually from 2018. AB 2162 requires local governments to approve supportive housing as a by-right use. You know, just as a reminder, the by-right use allows approval through administrative process without a public hearing. This bill did not have a lot of opposition. There were a lot of internal discussions with local governments who had some initial concerns with the bill, but it didn't have a lot of opposition, and it was signed into law last year.
Amy, can I ask you just a quick definitional question? What does supportive housing mean?
Supportive housing is, well, it's defined in the bill as being supportive of Supportive housing is, well, it's defined in the bill as being supportive of homelessness or folks who are transitioning to housing, right? So it's more of a, it's a development of a housing building that the local government is a part of to provide housing for those who are, who have housing concerns and needs.
Thank you.
Local housing restrictions. Actually, this was a big bill, and there was a lot of debate on it. This went through the legislature pretty handily. It requires local governments to approve supportive housing as a buy-right use. It was sort of in conjunction with 2162. It expanded on that. Are we going to see more bills like this next year and the year after? I would say probably, with the caveat that folks are really, in Sacramento, front and center on dealing with this, these wildfires and what to do about the independent utilities, et cetera. Like who, the other thing, as it relates, as we move into 2020, that the council and members of the community should know, is as we go through these wildfire issues, one of the things that is going to come up, which is an interesting juxtaposition to all of this, is there is some initial talk about, do you limit housing development in high-fire-prone areas? So that may, in fact, kind of trickle into legislation as they deal with things like inverse condemnation and others. But next year, as we hit the ground running, wildfire legislation is going to be front and center. And I do think that there is still going to be the housing component to it as well. Surplus public land, we've talked about. The last bill I wanted to put on your radar screen is the rent cap. AB 1482 places an upper limit on annual rent increases by 7%, plus the inflation up to a maximum of 10% for housing that's over 10 years old. Landlords must state a just cause for any conviction, and landlords with 10 or fewer rental properties are exempt. This is retroactive to March of this past year because they included that amendment because they, the author of the bill and the supporters of the bill didn't want to create a situation where landlords rush to increase exponentially rent in certain instances before this bill takes effect. And that is what I have for you today.
Thank you, Amy. If you'll just hang on a split second, I'm going to poll the audience if anybody has or wishes to address the council on this matter. I don't have any speaker cards for it, but please come up. We do have a speaker card. So if you could give that to Crystal and David, I know you know the drill about the two minutes.
I'm just sort of generally struck about sort of the optics of San Carlos's, what appears to be a rather combative approach to the affordable housing debate in Sacramento. And I'm curious how many other communities have their own lobbying effort in Sacramento, how effective the approach has been for us, for other communities. One example, the talk about ADUs, the county is tracking the legislation, putting together model ordinances for cities to adopt. So there's really no need for us in San Carlos to monitor that directly. One of the bills I noticed, 1763, that wasn't mentioned this evening, was passed this year. It's about a density bonus for fully affordable housing, which might be really helpful for us in San Carlos, especially along El Camino. And the only opposition letters that I saw against that bill were from Beverly Hills and Sonata and San Carlos. And so I'm just kind of curious how we want to come across and the effectiveness of our sort of taxpayer dollars towards this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on this item? Okay, seeing none, will anybody have questions? Ron, I see your lights on.
Thank you, Chair Olbert. Thank you, Amy. Boy, you really distilled a lot of information into a very succinct presentation. Do you have just a few questions? You said that SB 50 was held by, I guess, the, what, the leader of the committee or the leader?
Yes.
So I think I know what it means, but does whoever's in charge here, when they say hold a bill, he just says, I'm going to stick this thing on the shelf for now.
That's a really good question. So let me get into the suspense file. So if, this is the Appropriations Committee. If a bill is introduced that has some sort of fiscal implication, it goes to, it is referred to a certain policy committee based on that subject matter, and then it is referred to the Appropriations Committee. Both Assembly and Senate have an Appropriations Committee. If there is a price tag determined to be over $150,000, which is a real low threshold, it goes into what is called a suspense file. And what happens is that once all the bills that are slated to be heard in, let's take Senate Appropriations Committee, for example, it, those bills are put into a suspense file, and then there's some determination, based on the state revenues coming in, whether or not the state of California can afford all of these policy bills with fiscal implication. Now, as you know, a lot of politics come to play, right? And this gives the chair of those appropriations committees a lot of power in determining what bills come off of suspense, meaning they will pass the Assembly or Senate Appropriations Committee and go to the floor, or if they're held on suspense. Or the other term they use is held under submission. And if that's the case, the bill isn't up for a vote. It stays there, and it is, if it's a second year of a two-year bill cycle, it's dead, and they have to reintroduce it. Or if it's the first year, such as the case in SB 50, it's considered a two-year bill.
So it's not like this person made that decision arbitrarily. I mean, there must have been a lot of, he must have gotten a lot of input from several sources, several people on what the implications of the bill are, potentially how much support overall it had, and wanted to make sure that if it's going to go, it's going to get, it's going to pass altogether.
Correct, correct. That is absolutely correct. He heard from a lot of his constituents, a lot of local governments on their opposition to the vote.
Okay. Thank you. Next question is, on that AB 587, this business of splitting an ADU within a property, I'm not quite sure how that works. Do you end up with a separate property owner on the lot? Does the city have to split the lot? I don't know how that works. Is there a language in the bill that explains, you know, what the, how the city would go about doing that?
Yeah, it does. Let me grab my notes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really detailed because that issue came up quite a bit in committee. And I have the analysis, too, that I can leave for you. So, yeah, they would split the lot, and they would have essentially a separate owner if they were to sell it. So it would essentially, you would have, you would actually have two properties.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we'll see how that works out.
You know, I never know how, you know, these great ideas and how you guys implement them, but I don't know how you would do that, or if there were a lot of instances in that regard. There could be, anyway.
My last question is that your report mentioned on the rent increase cap, it said 7% plus inflation, but not over 10%. But our staff report said that it was 5% plus inflation. Which one's correct?
Well, that's a good question.
I thought I read in the paper that it was.
Probably staff report because they wrote that, and I wrote the PowerPoint. I'm going to, I'm going to bank on your staff being accurate.
Our staff never makes mistakes.
They correct me all the time, and they're wonderful, and they don't make me feel bad about it either. Let me see. Two, three, two. It's 5%.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. That's all I have for now.
Yeah.
Laura.
Thank you, Amy, for your presentation. Really appreciate it. With respect to the, all the proposed legislation on ADUs, what mix do you think of those will actually go through? Because it is clearly a very hot topic. Many communities view this as a low-hanging fruit, and I heard, and I won't be able to name the source, but that if 15% of homeowners in the Bay Area were to build out an ADU, that could resolve our housing crisis in the Bay Area. So there's, the magnitude of it is quite impressive. Where do you think this is going to go with respect to ADUs?
Well, you know, it depends on who you talk to, right? The authors of these bills, I think they want to continue to give more affordances to the building of ADUs. There were so many that were signed as a package deal. Some legislators believe that they've, you know, done that, and they're going to move on, and let's deal with something else. You can't, there will be, those bills that didn't make it to the governor's desk and the ones that he either vetoed or they didn't make it past both houses, they will be reintroduced. The question is whether or not there's the appetite to do that after, you know, the handful of bills that were signed. That remains to be seen. But we will see those bills reintroduced next year, and maybe even more. Yeah.
Thank you, Amy. Had just a few questions. AB 881, which you talked about, if a local agency adopts an ADU ordinance, they must designate areas where ADUs may be permitted. I just wanted to double-check. I perhaps was under the mistaken impression that the change in the law was such that cities could not ban ADUs, just period.
On certain conditions, yeah.
On certain conditions.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, it's, the bill is really long. So, I mean, it's very detailed, but, but for all intents and purposes, it makes it a lot harder.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, all right, so my statement is not accurate in detail, but in general?
In general, it certainly is, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other, the other questions I had actually are sort of more speculative, meaning I'm just curious if either they're currently perhaps ideas being thought of or returned to, or a new one. The return-to idea is, I seem to recall an earlier version of what Senator Weiner was working on involved linking the ability of a public agency like a city council to approve commercial projects on there being sufficient housing within some reasonable commuting area. And if I'm remembering that that was a variation at one point of something he was attempting, there are certain elements of that that I always found kind of attractive. It sort of made sense on a lot of levels because if people live far away, they're using state resources in terms of state highways and all the other stuff. Is that in the mix anywhere here, or is that sort of like, oh, that was two years ago, and we've moved on?
You know, I'm going to, Crystal, if I'm going to crystal ball your answer, I'm going to say that there wasn't a lot of support for that, and, you know, it was, that's happening organically anyway, especially if you look at some of the larger cities throughout California. But that wouldn't stop the senator or supporters to revisit that issue and see if there's some difference of opinion after, you know, a couple of years of a cooling off period and looking at the increase of lack of affordable housing in certain jurisdictions.
And actually, a couple of years of increasingly, not challenging, but invasive, for lack of a better term, proposals, which have all died, but sometimes that causes people to say, well, wait a minute, maybe, maybe that thing we rejected originally is not so bad after all.
Exactly. And the investments that the state has made to affordable housing, hopefully, we'll be able to see, you know, the 1.3 billion go to work pretty soon.
The other, and this is also purely speculative, the other thing I was just kind of curious about, in my own sort of anecdotal local research in San Carlos about why certain properties, which to my eye look like they could very, you know, they'd be very good higher-density housing locations, and yet the properties don't change hands, I learned that one of the reasons they often don't is because if the property owner is not looking to get out of owning real estate, if they sell real estate effectively, what they, and then take the proceeds and buy more real estate, all they've done is raised their property taxes. So the idea, the idea was, has anybody ever talked about whether, if a piece of property in a housing-impacted area was sold for housing, and it had enough affordable housing in it, that people, the seller would be allowed to carry over the assessed value to whatever they bought? In other words, to sort of remove that disincentive?
Right, right.
I'm just curious if that had ever come up.
It may have, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, that's kind of a geeky thing out there, so I just thought you might know. All right. Ron, I see you have some follow-on questions.
I do, thank you, Chair Olbert. Amy, I was just reviewing all these, these laws that the governor signed, trying to figure out, or trying to see if I missed something. Well, one of the things that we hear around here anecdotally is that there's not enough rental housing. I mean, we've got Wheeler Plaza over here where the one-bedroom condo is going to sell for nearly a million dollars, and a two-bedroom for a million five. Obviously, that's out of the price range of a lot of people. Excuse me, I'm wondering, I didn't see it, but maybe you can tell me whether or not there is any formulating legislation that may be focusing on increasing rental housing stock, and maybe giving incentives to developers to build it.
There was some initial discussion with regard to that, in terms of creating an incentive, a tax increment or the like, but they didn't, they didn't get off the runway. There was one, there were a couple of bills that didn't even make it out of the policy committee. Having said that, I know that the current chair of the Assembly Housing Committee, David Chu, out of San Francisco, is looking to expand the work he has done, not only with the rent cap bill, but with other rental legislation.
That would really solve a lot of problems, particularly around here. So, anyway, thank you. Laura.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Amy, for all the insight. I'm just wondering, given the council's interest, and I know it's an upcoming agenda item on ADUs, if, keeping a watch and monitor position on some of these ADU bills that are going through, and what doesn't get through the legislature might be things that could be applicable for San Carlos and appropriate for our community. It might be worth taking a look at that. In addition, what Amy is describing is that there's a range of strategies that the state is using, things that are around incentives versus stick as well. And I'm just wondering if, you know, Jeff, I think you, and in the past, have continued to monitor some of these bills and would recommend that we send a letter of support to, you know, for the ones that seem like they would fit our community and help us realize our housing goals, but also allow us to maintain the character of San Carlos. So just wanted to check in with you to see if that's still the plan moving forward and that type of thing.
That is exactly the plan moving forward, and unfortunately, our assistant city manager, who tracks and works on this, is still under the weather, so she's at home tonight. But she sent me several text messages already during the meeting to clarify things that are going on tonight, so I'm sure she's at home taking notes right now, and we'll be sure to follow up on all that.
I bet she was the first to say my 7% was wrong and her 5% was right.
I don't want to confirm that, but I can't deny it either.
Thank you, Amy. I really appreciate you coming down and chatting with us.
Thank you very much.
Great presentation.
All right, that brings us to item six, which is public comment. This is for people to address the council on any topic they wish that is not on the agenda. Items that are on the agenda, we will allow time for public comment on each one of the items. I have two cards tonight. If anybody else wants to address the council, please fill out a speaker card and give it to Crystal. The first is from Mike, and my apologies if I mispronounce names, Mike Opaleneck. The first is from Mike, and my apologies if I mispronounce names, Mike Opaleneck. And Mike, I think as you heard me allude to with some of the earlier speakers, we have two minutes and there's timers and lights and all sorts of stuff.
Real familiar. Real familiar, so I'll go really quick. You all have packages and it'll be in the public record. Good evening, city council members and mayor. After many attempts to meet with the city manager, city attorney, and other authorities and receiving no response, I'm here to brief you on unethical activity in the building department as well as the city's electronic reporting system failures that invite identity theft. In April, my identity was stolen and used by your system to create a fictitious and frivolous building department complaint unchecked. Because your system allowed my identity to be stolen, the thief was able to have a frivolous citation issued under my name to the wrong address for felonious purposes. The sole intent was to enhance his property. Because he lied and stole my identity, he eliminated the correct property owner out of any due process regarding the citation, me. Subsequently, in May, the building department became aware from the planning department of the fraud and asked the building department to reissue the frivolous complaint to the correct address, mine. Following that email, the person who started the fraud and identity theft asked the building department to do nothing in writing, and I quote from an email to the building department, "I would appreciate if you would leave the notice as is." The building department ignored the planning department's warning and complied with the criminal request aiding and abetting his felonious actions two weeks later. The result was thousands of dollars in vandalism and personal property damage inflicted by the fraudster that could have been prevented by the building department if they followed the correct course of action and reissued the citation to the correct address in the first place, mine. To make matters worse, the building department, in trying to cover up the huge blunder and criminal involvement, issued me a citation to clean up the mess that they and the fraudster created in the first place. I would like to have a meeting with a city council official, chief of police, city attorney, Mr. Rubens, to get this matter resolved in a quick and expeditious manner. Thank you much for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Greg and Jeff, is this issue under review by staff? I know that it's not on the agenda, so we can't discuss it, but whatever you--
I'm generally aware of Mr. Opaleneck's concerns that he's expressed tonight. And he did make place a call to me late last week, and I was not able to call him back today, but I had planned on calling him, and he did seek a meeting in that call.
Jeff, did you--
I was under the impression that this issue had already been brought to resolution in a satisfactory way with Mr. Opaleneck, so I'd be happy to meet with him.
Okay. Great, thank you. Next card I have is from Ken Castle. Good evening, Ken.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here to talk about the topics of the day, wildfire and the Transportation and Circulation Commission. I had the opportunity to attend a study session recently with the TCC. This was an interesting event because there was a moderator that asked the commissioners to set forward their key issues that they would like to pursue. It was a rare quorum of the group. I think that's because two new members are on board. But there was consensus that they would like to look at the issues of the hills evacuation, things that affect a large number of our population, and talk with neighboring cities and other organizations. The response from the city manager is that there is really no resource to support the commission on anything that they might launch, any kind of particular program, project, request, that they can't even hire a consultant. Now, if the commissions are going to be worthwhile to be able to take up issues that are important to this city and hopefully to you, they need to have some resource support. I get it that the city government may be overwhelmed with other things, that they take their direction from you and not from these commissions, but we have a broken commission system. Maybe you should be meeting council and commissions to hear from them, as well as former commissioners. But the bottom line is you have over 6,000 people and close to 2,700 structures in our hills in San Carlos. This represents the highest number of buildings and the greatest number of people in the very high-fire hazard zone in San Mateo County over any other community or city. This is, makes us really ground zero. So let the commission do its job. Give them the resources to do their job. Let's not wait until we have a disaster before we look back and say, gosh, I wish we could have done this. And give this a thought. Consider amending the commission's responsibilities to public safety and maybe call them the Transportation and Public Safety Commission. You have dedicated people that want to look at this issue. Please help them out. Thanks.
Thank you, Ken. Anybody else wish to address the council on items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move on to council communications and announcements. This is a period of time set aside. We do this in two phases. This phase is for brief comments that council members would like to make just to acquaint the public with activities that they've been involved with over the last few weeks. Laura.
Thank you, Chair Olbert. This past week, I attended, as representative of San Carlos, the Peninsula Clean Energy, as I serve on the board there. And one of the programs that we approved for staff to visit was to come up with a resilience plan as a result of the power shutdowns by PG&E. And particularly concern around some of those constituents and stakeholders. So, for example, medically assisted customers who need access to energy on an ongoing basis, that type of thing. Further, this weekend, as I was monitoring the events around the area, I learned that, and as well as at this PCE meeting, one of the council members mentioned that their cell phone towers don't work in their community when there's not any power. And subsequent to that, I heard in Southern California that with the power shutdown there, a fire broke out and the community members were not notified. So I would, this is concern, right? Because safety is one of our key charters. And I would like to just request of staff and council that we consider having an expedited community meeting where we get community input. These power shutdowns have occurred three times in the past two weeks, and there's another one planned for tomorrow. And I don't know that we fully appreciate the implications. And I would like us to try to understand from the community what their experiences are and hear from our staff and staff stakeholders, fire department, that type of thing.
I'm going to jump out of order here a little bit and just say that, if I understand your suggestion, Laura, I personally think that that's something we ought to really consider doing. You know, this is an opportunity to learn from something that's going to unfortunately be the new normal for our area and basically provide a forum, not only for us to hear from the community, but for us to do a little brainstorming to give staff some direction on things that we'd like studied. You know, the issue of disasters coming up and community members not being able to communicate with the service providers that they need to get help from is critically important nowadays. And it's a very different world than it was 30 years ago when everybody had landlines. Because landlines basically work under almost all circumstances. Nowadays, cell phone stuff doesn't work quite that well when things go bad. So I think what you're asking for is that we schedule a meeting relatively soon, a special council meeting, a one-topic council meeting to do this, have this discussion. So I certainly support that. Greg, is that something that we would, like, we don't have an agenda topic item on this agenda because there was nothing else submitted separately? Is that something we need to, even as a special meeting, put on the agenda for the next meeting and then have it scheduled afterwards? Or if there's enough interest from the council, can we just give staff direction to set up a meeting?
The protocol that you've set up is to, in order to agendize something, is that you're going to put it on the agenda. There is, I mean, as I mentioned in my memo, you can instruct us, but that doesn't give you the flexibility to flesh out exactly what you want. So if you just say, "agendize a special meeting," we would not have as much guidance as we'd have if you put it on your next agenda and you could flesh out exactly what issues you want us to discuss. So that's, but you could tell us to set up a meeting and talk about general fire safety issues and the impact on the community.
Which I appreciate your explaining that. I think that's actually what I heard Laura say. And that would be sufficient for me personally. I don't want to put words in Laura's mouth or anybody else's mouth. Yes, Adam.
Just ask a clarifying question on that, because what I heard, maybe I misheard. I heard Laura talk about a community meeting. And then, Mark, Chair Olbert, you mentioned a council meeting. So I just want to understand and make sure we're all on the same page on that.
So when I talk about community meeting, what I'm talking about is getting input from the community. Part of the concern I have about these power shutdowns and what we talked about at PCE is just the fact that we don't really know what the end consequences are of PG&E shutdowns, right? And there have been multiple of them. And with the fire breakouts and that type of thing, I'm just very concerned about the impact that their decision is having on our community and the risks associated with that. But I can't begin to imagine what some of the challenges are that our community is facing without hearing from them. So what I'm just looking for is an element where we invite the community in who's gone through this, right? Parts of our neighborhood have had power shutdowns and parts of it haven't. So I wasn't in the area that was with a power outage, right? So I just think, you know, opening up that avenue of dialogue.
I guess I'm just not clear whether you would want, you're suggesting a community meeting like we did with the fire safety meetings or whether you're talking about, Chair Olbert talked about like a special city council meeting to hear from that. So I just want to understand kind of what we're proposing and talking about.
I think what I'm hearing Laura say, and Laura, you correct me if I'm wrong, is that you're asking for a special council meeting, single topic, to talk about the topic as you described it. And like any council meeting, the public would have an opportunity. It's almost like a study session. The public would have an opportunity to come in and talk to us.
Yeah, whatever gets us there the most efficient way. So if it's a special council meeting, I don't think I'm talking about doing a workshop like we're doing with Homes For All or that type of thing, right? It's just to be able to have a focused discussion on this issue. Does that make sense?
Does that answer your question?
That's fine. I get where you're coming from. No, I get it. Okay. That's fine.
So if I can interpret that, I think I have enough to work with in terms of an agenda item there. And basically, it would be, you know, next available agenda spot, either at the next council meeting or if the next council meeting is too full to accommodate an item of that size, then schedule a special meeting at the council within the same timeframe. So I'll take a look at the agendas tomorrow with the exec team and we'll figure out the best way to get this to you as soon as possible.
Despite the fact that I personally support what you just said, I want to double-check something. So far, I've only heard two council members say that they'd like to do that. So is there anybody else? Otherwise--
Would like to do that, yes.
All right. Then, thank you, Jeff. Who else would like to make some comments about what they-- or Laura, were you not finished? You may have other things.
I think that's enough for one night. Thanks.
I don't know, I always hear from this side a lot. Ron, did you have--
Yeah, thank you, Chair Olbert. I just had one item. I went to the local policymakers' task force meeting last Thursday. We meet once a month. We had a report on high-speed rail updates as well as electrification. And I'd like to just alert the public that there will be a workshop on November 21st in Half Moon Bay from 9:00 to 1:00. And this is specifically going to be about not only the long-range service vision for Caltrain, but also it's an organizational workshop to look at the entire structure of Caltrain and whether or not it should remain part of the San Mateo County Transit District or become a separate entity. It is a meeting that promises to be full of a lot of interesting viewpoints on it, and it will be open to the public.
Thank you, Ron. Adam?
Two quick things to mention. One, Councilmember McDowell and I attended the Council of Cities Meeting Dinner in Foster City on Friday. And we was at a company called Zooks, which is building autonomous vehicles. Sort of they try to compete with Uber ultimately in terms of an autonomous vehicle for transportation, which was kind of cool to see some of their prototypes. And then, secondly, I did go to, Assemblymember Mullen had some of the new voting machines out and had a demo on that, which was interesting to see, this sort of more electronic voting machines with paper ballots afterwards. I just want to pass it on. I think there's, it'd be interesting to see as they start getting implemented.
Were you able to figure out how to hack them?
I did not try.
Good. Sarah, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nothing to add tonight, Chair. Thank you.
I just had one thing to mention, which is that yesterday, Laura and I had an opportunity to attend a fundraising effort of an organization called One Step Beyond. This is a not-for-profit originally started in Arizona. It's expanding into San Mateo County and into, more broadly, into California. Their mission is a very interesting one and I think a very significant one, which is to provide services and support for adults with various kinds of cognitive disabilities. And this is an organization that had applied for a grant under the city's philanthropic donation program. And Laura and I sit on that subcommittee and we approved their grant because we thought it was a good thing that they were trying to do. But I really encourage folks, I learned a lot more about the organization than I did from their application. And I encourage folks to consider it if you have children or relatives that have cognitive issues that need to be addressed as adults. And if it's something that falls within your wheelhouse that you might be willing to support, I think it'd be wonderful to see people support them financially. Because one of the things that struck me was their primary mission, or the way they do their mission, is by creating community. They create a place where people with cognitive disabilities can feel that they are part of a community, honestly, and honestly, part of a community. And you can tell from the expressions on people's faces when they're videoed as part, you know, in these activities. It means a huge amount to them. Because it's a good reminder that human beings are not like tigers. We actually, part of being human is being able to associate with other people and being part of a community. So they gave us this plaque to thank us for our, thank the city for our donations, which I will give to the city manager to display at City Hall. All right, that brings us to the consent calendar. These are items that the council typically votes on en masse without discussion, although any council member can ask to have an item pulled for separate consideration. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar or are there items that one council member would like to have pulled for separate consideration?
Chair Olbert, I will move to approve City Council Consent Calendar, items A through F and item G, adopting ordinance number 1555 and ordinance of the City Council of City San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Municipal Code, Chapter 2.24, commissions.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Farman Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Chair Olbert?
Yes. All right, the consent calendar passes. That brings us to item nine, public hearing. First one, 9A, is consideration of adopting ordinance 1553, amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 15.04, technical building codes to adopt the 2019 California Building Code series. Good evening, Al. My recollection, if I'm recalling correctly from talking to Jeff, this is exactly the same item that was at the last meeting, but state law requires that we actually act on it twice and not put it on the consent calendar the second time. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman and members of the city council. So I'm prepared to leave it open to your questions or I could provide a brief presentation. So it's really up to you. We do have a number of individuals here this evening that can answer your questions. We have someone from the fire department. We have our senior building official. And we have one of our plan check consultants here this evening.
Thank you, Al. Looking at my colleagues, do you wish to get a recap of the presentation? Or if not, if there are specific questions that people want to ask, we can simply move directly to that. And if there are not, we'll move past that as well. Ron, it looks like you have a question.
I do have a question. I got, I think we all got an email from a resident questioning whether or not these building codes affected commercial construction in the future. And I think I know the answer, but I just thought it might be good to state, to have that stated for the public record. Is it true that all of these building code improvements imposed by the state will apply both to residential and commercial projects?
Yes, they do. Both.
I wanted to know.
All right. Any other questions from the DICE? Is there any-- Is there any member of the public that would wish to address the council on this? If not, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ober?
Yes.
Councilmember McCollins?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
All right. The public hearing is closed. I will entertain, if there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion on the item.
I'll read it.
Now, remember, you have to do this all in one breath.
Bong. I move to adopt Ordinance 1553, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code Chapter 15.04 Technical Building Codes to adopt the 2019 additions of the California Administrative Code, California Building Code Volumes 1 and 2, California Residential Code, California Electrical Code, California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Energy Code, California Historical Code, California Existing Building Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Referenced Standards Code, 1997 Uniform Security Code, the 2018 addition of the International Property Maintenance Code with amendments and modifications, and Safety Assessment Program SAP placards.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments? Oh, excuse me, any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? I don't, okay. Seeing none, is there any discussion or commentary from the dais?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say, after hearing Sarah read that motion, now you know why I chose the motion with the shortest number of words.
Well, we're just going to have to have you do the next one then, Ron. So, Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ober?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Councilmember McCollins?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. That brings us to Item 9B, the second of our two public hearings, which is consideration of adopting Ordinance 1554, adopting the 2018 addition of the International Fire Code with the 2019 California Fire Code Amendments. Good evening again, Al.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and I'd just like to say the same thing, basically, for the, as the last. We have Nicole Stoney, our deputy fire marshal, who's available to answer questions as, and we have Robert Lord, our senior building official here as well, and Donald Zauer from Westcode Consultants. And that concludes my presentation.
Are any questions or comments from the dais? Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council? Then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
I second.
There's a motion and a second. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McCollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Ober?
Yes.
And Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Motion, our public hearing is closed. Any comments or discussion from the dais before we move something? Would somebody like to move something? I know, Ron, you were really waiting, literally with bated breath to do this.
I move to adopt Ordinance 1554, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code Section 15.040.110 California Fire Code to adopt the 2018 addition of the International Fire Code and the 2019 CA Fire Code, including all adopted standards as specified prescribing regulations governing conditions hazardous to life and property from fire, hazardous materials or explosion, and for providing this fire safety inspection process for hazardous users or operations, and establishing a Bureau of Fire Prevention San Carlos Fire Ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any member of the public wish to address the council? Seeing none, any comments or further questions from the dais? Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Ober?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCollins?
Yes.
And Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
That motion passes as well. Crystal, I have to ask something. I just noticed, do you refer to me as chair if I'm the last person in the order?
I think I usually do it as councilmember. That was just a slip.
Okay, I was just curious. I thought I detected a pattern. That's okay. All right. That brings us to, remember, we're going to take Item 11 before we consider Item 10, A, B, and C, so this is additional council communications and announcements. Do anybody have additional comments they wish to make?
Well, I'm going to make one. I'm hoping that I get to do this next year. I'm not going to do it next year, but on Saturday was my mother-in-law's 99th birthday, and I'm going to ask for a proclamation next year on her 100th birthday, so.
That sounds perfectly reasonable.
Assuming she's still with us, and there's nothing wrong with her right now, so I'm pretty sure she will.
Any other comments or reflections? Any comments or reflections from staff? All right. That completes Item 11. That brings us back to Item 10, New Business. We're going to do 10A, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the updated salary and benefit resolution for the management group for the period July 1, 2019, and through June 30, 2021.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the city council, Jeff Malte, city manager. As the council's aware, they have been discussing compensation for a group of employees in the city referred to as the management group, which is a wide-ranging group of unrepresented employees who don't fit in one of our current unions. This does not, this group does not include the city manager or the city attorney, so we're not represented here, which is why I'm presenting on behalf of the staff here this evening in terms of these changes. In terms of the fiscal implications on what has been agreed to between the council and the groups, the total cost over the coming fiscal years will be $251,000 in compensation for the group in its entirety. The terms of the salary and benefit resolution will be two years from July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2021. Will include cost of living adjustments that are effective July 8, 2019, and July 6, 2020, of 3% respectively in each year. There are three, or, excuse me, four positions that will be receiving equity adjustments based on market surveys. Those positions are the Assistant City Manager of 2.5%, City Clerk of 2.55%, Parks and Recreation Director of 2.65%, and a Senior Management Analyst of 4%. In addition to that, the other significant monetary change in the salary and benefit resolution will be that effective January 1 of 2020, the city will begin providing a matching contribution into a deferred comp of a maximum of $400 a month. Those issues there reflect the majority of the changes in the salary and benefit resolution. There were some other tweaks and legal language modifications, but these were the primary compensation elements to the agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Jeff, I'm going to jump in here just with two questions. One is, would you define for the benefit of the public what you meant by equity adjustments?
Market-based salary compensation increases.
So it's where a position is earning noticeably less than what comparable positions in other agencies?
That's correct. So if we survey, which we do, comparable cities to San Carlos and San Mateo County, and then you look at the median of the total compensation paid to those positions, the council's direction is to try to keep our staff in, at the median level, so these positions, when surveyed, were up to that 4% below market.
And my second question is, one of the, and I'll have to define the term here, too. One of the metrics that is sometimes used to communicate the overall impact financially of revised agreement is what's called total compensation increase, which sort of subsumes everything, all the dollar-related things into a pool and says, what's the percentage increase versus where we are today?
That's correct.
Do you have information that you can share of what that approximately is expected to be over the next, the term of the contract?
I must have missed an element of that question.
The total compensation increase.
Oh, total comp?
Yes, in percentage terms.
In a percentage terms, it is, gosh, let me remember quickly. I think in total percentage terms, it was about, for this group, 3.9%.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the dais? Is there anybody in the audience among the public who would wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, and seeing no questions from the dais, we'll entertain a motion.
Chair Ober, I will move that we adopt a Resolution 2019-...
86.
86. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the updated salary and benefit resolution for the management group for the period of July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further comment or discussion? Hearing none. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember McCollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ober?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
I'll just make a comment here that will apply to, I'll repeat it briefly at the next one. I think it's great that we're able to recognize the efforts of our staff by granting these improvements. That's not always been the case in the city's history. We could not serve the public as well as we do without an incredibly hard-working and very talented city staff, and it's, I think it's great that we're able to recognize it in some, you know, fairly concrete fashion this way. The next item on the agenda is Item 10B, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the updated salary and benefit resolution for the confidential group for the period July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the council. This is very similar to the last item we just discussed. This is for a group of employees referred to as confidential employees. These are mostly administrative support positions who are not eligible for representation in one of our units because they deal with the same type of confidential salary and job information that would, that we need their support on in negotiating with our unions. So the law carves a mountain, makes them a special group. This group, the total compensation increases for the coming years will be $73,000. It represents approximately 3.9% again of total comp for the coming years. The key elements, the key economic elements of this agreement include the following things. It would be a two-year term, July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2021, with cost of living adjustments effective July 8, 2019, of 3.5%, and July 6, 2020, of 3.5%. Market-based equity adjustment for the position of management analyst of 3.85%. Deferred compensation match per month of up to $225 per month. An education reimbursement program effective October 28, 2019, that will expand to include the repayment of student loans with a maximum annual amount of $1,250 per employee per calendar year. And a Vision Care Plan Amendment that will remove the requirement that employees who enroll dependents on the Vision Plan pay a 2% enrollment fee to the city. That 2% will be removed. Other than that, the only changes to the salary and benefit resolution were clerical and legal-type adjustments to language. These represent all the economic terms of the agreement, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Ron, it looks like you have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff, I forgot, how many employees does this represent, total?
I believe it's in the neighborhood of 10. I don't have the exact figure. I think it's actually like nine, and we have a couple positions right now that either weren't filled or have just been filled.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from the public who would wish to address the council on this item? I don't have any cards, but, okay. Any further comments or questions from the dais? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 2019...
-87.
-87. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the updated salary and benefit resolution for the confidential group for the period July 1, 2019, through July 30, 2021.
I believe you mean June 30, 2021.
June 30, 2021.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comment? Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ober?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Councilmember McCollins?
Yes.
My comments from before, I'll duplicate here. It's great to be able to recognize the good, hard-working staff we have, without which we wouldn't have the city that we have. So I'm glad the economic times allow us to do that. That brings us to Item 10C. Laura, I believe you have the comment you want to make before we get to that, though.
Yes, Chair Ober. Out of an abundance of caution, I will recuse myself from this item.
And here, it's because I thought you wanted to leave early. No, I'm just kidding. I know it's not, so.
Chair, can I ask, we take a short recess before we take this item on?
It's not 9 o'clock yet.
I don't want to do it mid, mid item.
We will, we will adjourn for 10 minutes. We will, we will adjourn for 10 minutes.[373.87]
...by the investment. So that really is the high level, is we want to be able to do with the fund what an endowment of a community foundation can do. Ultimately, we have had great participation and communication with the city staff, and we look forward to partnering with them to reach mutually agreed upon agreement by which we would be able to take this forth. So, thank you, City of San Carlos, for seeding our community's future. We really look forward to doing great things for our current generation and generations going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. I would ask both you and Nicole to stand by, because I'm sure we will have some questions for you. But first, I'd like to give the members of the public an opportunity to address the council on this item. I have one card from Ken Castle, so Ken, if you'd like to come up, I'd appreciate that. If there's anybody else who wishes to address the council, please fill out a speaker card and give it to Crystal. Good evening, Ken.
Good evening again, Chair and council members. You know, I have no problem with providing city funding for a community foundation. What I have a problem with is taking it out of PG&E money. Now, granted, this was a past council. The council discussed this in 2017, before we had the wildfires of 2017 and 2018 and now 2019. There was no discussion about public safety projects, other than putting $3 million as reserve into the Holly Street 101 interchange. The other $1 million was talked about going into the Affordable Housing Fund. I really think it's time to revisit the use of that PG&E money. If we have a disaster in the hills, do you really want to be talking to reporters, asking the question, "Why did you spend that money that came out of a disaster on things other than mitigating a future disaster?" The fact that San Bruno, the city attorney, has sent a letter to the U.S. District Court asking that PG&E provide $3 million as compensation for about 2,600 hours of community service remaining from the San Bruno gas explosion, that they provide that money so that the city could do a major wildfire mitigation project in Cressmore Canyon, which adjoins the neighborhood that was almost destroyed by the San Bruno gas explosion. What is it that we not get about earmarked funds coming from a disaster that should be earmarked for public safety? I really encourage you to revisit this. If you want to provide money to a foundation, take it out of operating revenues and not out of the PG&E money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I have another card from David Pollak. Good evening again, David.
Thank you, Chair. Albert, I didn't come with a prepared statement, because I still was thinking through all of my feelings on the subject. I really want the community to come together and set priorities, especially around youth and families. So I'm really excited in the whole concept of a community foundation. I've gotten rather frustrated or concerned that the conversation has shifted from sort of priorities for the community in general, and has kind of separated into, okay, there's the district and SCEF over here, and the community foundation and the rest of the community over there. And in my work with the Home for All and the Housing Dialogues, we work together with communities to set priorities and community benefits around housing. I know that the commissions are going through an exercise right now, okay, what are the priorities for the commission in the coming year, and how to work together with folks on the commission to set priorities. I know within the new developments, we're looking to set community priorities, whether it's a swimming pool or something else. And I wish that the community foundation could be part of that process in helping to set priorities. One of their community outreach events, they talked about maybe setting some priorities, but weren't really sure how to go about it. But before the funding is authorized, I strongly hope that the foundation can set priorities for its funds, or at least a strategy to get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on this topic? All right, seeing none. Discussion, question from, or let's sort of focus on questions to start with from the dais. Ron.
Thank you, Chair Albert. I guess, Jessica, this is for you. Just full disclosure, I met with Jessica and Cameron Johnson on Saturday, and we talked about basically, or primarily, the investment policy, which I believe needs to, what the foundation wants to do and what the city has set, these two goals or policies need to be reconciled. And I'm going to recommend that we do that tonight. But I just wanted to ask you once more. I know you've done a lot of outreach, and Mr. Pollak had an interesting comment about making sure that the foundation is involved in setting priorities for projects and that sort of thing. Maybe you could just review for us briefly what the overall philosophy is of the foundation and how it intends to work with the other nonprofits in town?
Yes, definitely. So as part of our initiating priorities, because we are, you know, a group of citizens, you need to understand, we want to be able to prove ourselves to the community in terms of our ability to give back. And so, within the first couple of years, our true intent is to support and amplify the good work of the existing nonprofits in the community already. And we would be able to do that through building community connections, in terms of really helping nonprofits interact with one another, being a connector, for us to be a connector of nonprofits, in case they have, you know, one has needs, one has gives, and the opportunity to connect them. We want to establish a community calendar, really for nonprofits to start to coordinate their activities, so that they don't overlap or step on one another. We also want to build a community directory for those community members who want to contribute, whether it be in volunteer time, funds, donations, to be able to know what is available in the community for them to contribute to and participate in. And then, along with that, our intent is also to, really, just our grant-making is targeted towards the 501(c)(3)'s that serve the San Carlos community. So anybody who applies, we would have an unbiased group of folks who would review those grant applications, and ultimately reward the grants that come from the immense income of the endowment and any fundraising activities that may happen.
Okay, thank you.
Adam.
Thank you, Chair Albert. And I assume we're just doing questions now, is that correct?
Yes, with the understanding that there's a gray area between questions and comments. So, I mean, if there's statements you want to make to clarify where you're coming from, that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you both for the presentation. Appreciate it. And I will mention, I also met with Jessica and spoke with Cameron as well, mostly around the investment policy as well. And I would agree with Councilmember Collins that we've got some conflict, and I would like to see some flexibility in terms of giving some capital appreciation opportunities for the foundation as well, so that they can start doing the good work that they're hoping to do. I guess I'd like to get a couple clarifications on, let me start with the greatest number of San Carlos and define that. So I guess I have a little bit of concern about that, because I just want to understand kind of how that gets defined. I could see, like, maybe if somebody wanted to build a skate park, that might only hit a certain portion of the population. Would that, something like that, qualify if we felt like, yes, that's a good thing for the community? Or, I guess, something that's more limited to schoolchildren or something, how do those things get rectified versus maybe expanding a park, or doing something, or, you know, building some facilities out of park, which might benefit everybody? I guess I'm a little concerned with our limitations around that aspect of the giving.
Yeah, so I believe you're referring to the second clause in the grant awarding section.
Correct.
And so, the language in that clause there, "Grant should be awarded to those projects and programs serving the greatest number of San Carlos residents." So that's more of a recommendation versus a mandatory item. It's a way to rank applicants as they come in, to give priority to an organization or a program that's serving the greater community, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that group would absolutely need to be selected.
I guess, I appreciate you clarifying that. I guess what I'm a little concerned is, I'm not sure if we're giving to nonprofits, how many of the nonprofits in our community actually serve this great number of individuals or the community. You may have the Friends of the Adult Community Center, you have the Park and Rec Commission, you have the Lions Club, or other things that are maybe doing smaller groups. I'm just not sure, are we limiting ourselves too much in terms of, by this recommendation, where we can, where the foundation can support the community?
I would ask the foundation members if, what's their reaction? Is that how they interpret the language? Do they feel like it's a restriction? I believe this is based really on our grant policy, so that's what we relied on in trying to create some criteria. But, you know, if the council wanted to amend that, or change it, or add language that simply said, you know, this criteria is meant to be taken collectively, as a way to help you evaluate the grant proposals that came in. And we understand that, you know, one piece of criteria for one application may be more relevant than the others. And at the end of the day, there's a judgment, but, you know, there's a spirit to this policy, as opposed to a letter of the law.
So I guess maybe I'll look at that again and see if potentially there's some, if there's a specific language in there, or just a piece that's in here, that maybe we can sort of clarify that a little bit, might...
Right, and I think that's what I'm saying, is if the council's interested in us adding that language in, then that's, so that we can keep track of that. And if that's something where you'd like to see us just make that clarification, so that folks understand, it's not meant to be, you know, right, a contest between applications that, you know, I'm looking around the room, there's quite a few people in this room who I know have evaluated grant applications in their lives, and, you know, it's not that cut and dry, so.
I guess, one of the questions I had was, you mentioned at the end about returning the endowment, should things change? And you mentioned that there were some changes that the foundation was interested in, and I guess I was unclear on that and what that was. Can you just sort of explain that to me again? Or maybe Jessica can, or what those changes are, or what they're asking for?
Yeah, so in our discussions, a concern was brought up, when the foundation goes to award a grant, that if then the grant recipient violates those terms, that it would affect our agreement with them. And so, we wanted to further flesh out that language, to make it clear that we're talking about the foundation's activities specifically.
I see. So you're saying that if they gave to a 501(c)(3) that then no longer became a 501(c)(3), for example, how does that get affected? Where you're trying to clarify that we're talking about just the foundation itself. Got it. Okay, that's helpful. Can I ask two more quick questions? Okay, and I have one last comment. How do you envision sort of quantifying, sort of, you talked about the giving grants to nonprofits. If we decided there was an effort by the community to build a swimming pool, or do something larger, how does that fit into that box? Because there may not be a nonprofit that that could go to necessarily.
Because the way we've set up the foundation, it's not controlled by the city. The city is a potential beneficiary of a foundation grant.
Okay, thank you. And then, the last question, I just, so things like public safety that was brought up, is there any limitation, sort of, if there was a nonprofit that came up that was focused on public safety for the City of San Carlos, would that nonprofit be eligible for grants from the foundation?
Yes.
The answer is yes. Any nonprofit serving the San Carlos community would be eligible to apply for a grant, and it would be evaluated with the same criteria that are going to be published in public, along with all the other applicants of that grant cycle.
Great, thank you. And then, just one quick comment, Chair, is, I guess, I looked at the San Bruno investment policy, and one piece that stuck out to me, that they were getting also PG&E money, I wasn't sure if it was in there, that if we decide to make changes to the investment policy, that PG&E couldn't benefit from any investments that we did. And I'd like to just suggest that we include that in the criteria.
Thank you, Adam. Sarah.
Thank you, Chair. Adam, you and I are on the same wavelength. I'm going to start with questions, and then I have a few things that I'd like to pose to the council, which I think I'll save for after the question period.
You can put them in as well. It's up to you.
Well, it's a lot.
Well, if...
I'll throw out a few, and then I'll circle back.
Use your judgment, because we'll definitely incorporate them when we have a broader discussion.
Okay. So Jessica, my first question is just kind of an organizational question, and I just want to make sure that we, as a council, but also members of the public watching tonight, we're all kind of on the same page of the pillars of the community foundation. And so, in my mind, and please correct me if I'm wrong, there's, what I see is kind of three pillars of the community foundation. One is the grant giving, which is a very big job. The second is being the connector, as you mentioned, with the calendar and resources. And then the third is the benefit of already having the foundation established, so that when, way down the line, in the future, if and when there is a capital campaign to raise money for a park, or a youth center, or, we already have those, but a pool, or something else big, that then you could step in and help run that capital campaign. Is that, am I kind of making the umbrella wide enough to encompass the idea, the vision?
The intent is, the third piece specifically, we would be, at that point, staffed, well, maybe not staffed, but have this skillset to do fundraising at the large scale, and be able to connect the other nonprofits in the community, to ultimately drive a community-wide campaign, so that we can ultimately, together, work towards contributing to the capital campaign.
Okay, great, thank you. My second question, and this kind of builds on what Adam said, this is about Exhibit B, the summary of the agreement of conditions for our consideration tonight. And there were three areas that the foundation wanted to discuss separately with staff. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So the third one, I think you just covered with Adam, which was kind of the clawing back of the money, and if the nonprofits that you give money to, if they make you liable. And it sounds like we're on the same page, that will not make you liable, or the foundation liable. The other two issues are how earnings will be used for administrative costs, and you wanted to, the foundation wants to have those terms mutually agreed upon with city staff. Can you give me a little detail on that, please?
The way that it's currently written is, it's a percentage of earnings, especially as we're going into our first year, we have no idea what the earnings will be. So our proposal is that maybe we alter the language to be a percent of assets managed. That way, we'll at least know how we can build a budget and move forward, because our intent is not to do actually any fundraising early, based upon commitment to some of the nonprofits in the community that are a little concerned about that. So we had spoken to those other nonprofits, and said we will do a slow roll on the fundraising. So it was specifically the terminology around percent of earnings that we were concerned about, especially in our first year.
Okay. And then, the other issue that you wanted to carve out to discuss with staff was the grant policy. Is there a reason why that needs to be tabled and discussed separately?
I actually don't think that we really need to necessarily discuss, I think we've covered it as part of the discussion today. I was, being a more like, you know, tech person, and, you know, when you write code, you usually write reusable code in one place, so you don't have to continually modify it. So the fact that we were going to write that grant policy, and we're probably going to be even more stringent on our grant policies than what the city has in place, I was just recommending that we put it all in our grant policy, that the city can review and, you know, and comment on, on an annual basis. But we are completely comfortable with how the grant details are written, other than what we just discussed just now. So we're happy to accept that, and just add the additional conditions in our grant policy, referencing this one.
Okay, great. I'll ask one more question, and then I'll yield my time. This has to do with the name, and I know that we've gone around and around, and we've talked about it, and Mark and Ron brought it up at our last meeting. Are you open to being known as the Community Foundation of San Carlos, with the wording that way? And when will you start using it, if you're open to that?
We are definitely open to that. We are open to others' recommendations and suggestions as well. We did also say that we were going to work with the San Carlos Education Foundation, to sort of finalize and lock that down. We put a couple proposals together to share, to actually chew on, as part of our next community foundation board meeting coming up. And so, we have a couple proposals that were put, including things like adopting the San Carlos Together name into our foundation name, or simply the Community Foundation of San Carlos. We can start using that immediately, as that is our Doing Business as name, which we can, you know, as a board, take a vote on at our next meeting and move forward.
Okay, that's great. I think just the SCCF continues to...
Yeah. And we had committed to never use that acronym if we were to use that name, but I think we're very open to changing our public-facing name.
Okay, great, thank you.
So my first set of questions, I think, Nicole, are probably for you. When we look at the slide you had put up, Endowment Investment, Investing and Spending, and there were four items there, I don't know, Crystal, if we can bring that back up, that's a different presentation, but I should say, I know you can bring it back up, because I wasn't sure. I think it's back up, keep going. There we go. Thank you, number five. So I'd like to get some insight into why, or if you'd like to phrase it, me to phrase it differently, what was the purpose or goal of each of these four constraints that staff came up with?
I'm going to turn this over to Greg.
So, these conditions are really based on sort of our worldview of finance and money management. And, you know, I just want to put that out there and admit to that upfront. You know, we don't, we're not a foundation, we don't operate like a foundation, we're a government entity. So as we put this together, we looked to our own financial policies, in terms of developing recommendations, to bring this forward. And this is sort of what we came up with, in terms of what we felt like was important. And it was also based on some different commentary that we had from this council, on the prior council, as this was talked about, in terms of, there was a lot of discussion that we could go back to, about wanting to make sure that the $2 million was protected, wasn't somehow lost, and also wasn't spent or given away. And so, that was reflected here. The 10% really, we just felt like 10% seemed like a reasonable number to try to grow the endowment over time. And 10%, I know, for most nonprofits, is a target amount, in terms of what you would have in terms of overhead. But having had the opportunity to talk with foundation members, I think it would also be reasonable if we could either understand what the dollar amount was they were looking for, particularly the first couple of years, in terms of administrative overhead, that would be helpful, or to simply say that, you know, the 10% maybe doesn't apply the first 24 months. That would be, you know, that would be fine, too. Limited time, understanding that they have startup costs, and they're going to have more administrative overhead, and they're not going to be bringing in a lot of money. So that's really the thought process that goes into the development of those particular items. I think probably the first two are really more based on municipal finance and our own policies, and, you know, the others are really, I think, sort of, what we see as best practices out there, in terms of nonprofits and administrative overhead and that sort of thing.
All right, that's helpful. Next question actually is for Jessica, although it spins off of Slide 6, if you could pop that up, Crystal. The reporting to the city, I'd just be interested in, and this may be part of your plan and bylaws already, I almost feel like I'd like to see something that the foundation is committed to making its records open to the public, you know, almost like as if you were a public If you could talk to me a little bit about that, like what you're thinking, have you guys discussed that, is you're like, Mark, yes, that's what we're planning on doing?
More or less, that's what we were planning on doing. All of our board meetings will be public, our agenda is going to be posted pre-meeting, people can attend our meetings, and our meeting minutes are going to be posted thereafter.
Financials, budgets.
Financials, budgets. We were going to pull that together once a year, and it was our intent to present that to city council, just for everyone's awareness, in terms of where we were giving our grants, the wonderful things our grantees have done with the grant monies, et cetera. So this was always a part of our intent. The city has just taken the opportunity to detail some specifics on this. I think one concern we had briefly mentioned was, do you want to really know every single receipt and expenditure that we spend? And, you know, we're happy to provide that as requested, and in terms of investment activity. Do you really want to see every minute transaction, or are you comfortable with more of a summary? Because we were, if the request is there, we can definitely provide it.
Well, I'll just say, in general, my leaning is, I would love for you guys to be as open as you possibly can, whether or not the rest of the council wants it, that's a different issue, but that's just where I'm coming from. Thank you. My next question is on Page 8, and it's actually a Greg question. And that's Item F, 7F, which I view broadly speaking as the non-discriminatory language. The question I have is, is this sufficiently broad to match the federal protections? I think it is, but I'm not sure.
Well, that's what it's intended to do. So it's intended to cover discrimination, I mean, that's something, there's probably such a big body of law, that it would be hard to describe each and every act that applies in this situation, but it was intended to cover that.
Okay.
State and federal law.
State and federal law. I mean, I suppose the language could specifically refer to state and federal law without citing all of it, right?
We could add that reference certainly to the agreement.
That would be belt and suspenders, but it probably made me feel a little better.
There might already be a general provision elsewhere, I think that's in the agreement also, to comply with all laws, but I'll make sure of that.
And then, Page 9, I believe this is probably a Jeff and in part a Greg question. The Jeff portion of this is, I'd like to understand, once again, what the goal or purpose was here.
I think it was to clarify that, in the event that, you know, there was really some significant change with the foundation, it was defunct, they didn't have a board anymore, they weren't, you know, active, or, you know, embezzlement had occurred, or some criminal activity had occurred, these types of things, then we would be able to claw back the available principal of the endowment away from the foundation, and return it to the city coffers.
The Greg question, actually, I'd like Greg's input, but I'd also appreciate Jessica's perspective on this, too. It has to do with 6D. When I read 6D initially, I think I understood the goal behind it, but it struck me as very broad language, and if I were on the foundation board, I'd be scared to death doing almost any award of any grant, because it might tripwire something that would blow up the entire foundation. And so, I'm wrestling with that, I'm trying to understand...
I mean, I think it is definitely a catch-all term, it's because we can't predict every particular circumstance that might come up, but I think it's intended to cover what Jeff is determining, or a general change in law that, dealing with foundations, that makes the whole purpose of the grant unnecessary, or not... or not legal anymore. And I find that that's probably not very likely, but it helps to have these types of clauses to address circumstances that we can't really foresee exactly.
Jessica, I think I saw you nodding your head as I was making those comments.
Yes, and in fact, 6D was something that we wanted to work with the city staff on to make mutually agreeable, because it was definitely something that made us concerned.
Okay, thank you. Ron, I see you have your light on. Before I hand the mic over to you, I, since other folks have made some comments, I'm going to make a couple of comments of my own. We will get back to a fuller discussion. As I listen to the questions that have been asked, not all, I mean, both mine and, and others, I would like to point out that I think part of what we're wrestling with here is to what extent the city wishes to still be involved in how the $2 million gets used. Because remember, and this goes back to the prior council when we were first talking about this, there's nothing that says the council couldn't encourage the creation of Community Foundation, not give it the $2 million, and basically say, please come to us with a budget that you want to do each year for fundraising, and with ideas for donations, and we'll hold on to the money and earmark it, and, you know, we'll vote on it each year. Okay, that one's good, that one's not good. One of the trade-offs involved with that is that keeps the council and the city intimately involved in all those things, and it, it doesn't create a separate community presence. People feel differently about that. For me, that's a big deal. That's a big part of why I want the foundation to exist and succeed, is I want it to be an independent entity, separate from the city. But I just would point out for my colleagues, that's something we're going to have to wrestle with, which is, which is, okay, you know, it's, we're talking, I almost feel like we're talking about making a grant of $2 million, but we don't want to quite let go of the money, okay? And if we don't, maybe we shouldn't do that. Or if we are willing to do it, maybe we should not have quite so many constraints on it, as is sort of implicit in here. The other comment that I want to make is a little bit more procedural in nature, and this is not a criticism of anything. I met, too, met with Jessica and I don't remember the other gentleman's name, what?
Brian.
Brian, thank you, Brian. Several times in the last few weeks, and had asked them a question of, is there a shot clock where we need to decide this tonight? I personally almost feel like tonight would be better spent, not so much trying to tweak in real time what it is that we're going to enact as a motion, but to give staff and the, and the foundation further direction and say, please go off and come, come up with a set of final agreements that you will bring back to us, which we then can review and vote on. Because I think otherwise, we're going to run into, well, do this, tweak this, do that, do that, and people will get lost on, on what we're doing. So that's a procedural comment, but I, I would like my colleagues to think about that. Ron.
Thank you, Mark. So I, just one quick question for Jeff. I have Jeff slash Greg, because I'm not really sure who's going to answer it. On the investment policy, how much leeway can we give a foundation? We're expecting this corpus to be preserved. And how much leeway can we legally give them in terms of how they invest the money?
That's probably a question for me, Councilman for Collins.
Maybe it's too broad, but it just...
Well, I think the short answer is, you have a great deal of discretion in describing how the funds are going to be used and how the income and, but you also have a lot of discretion to put restrictions when you're making a gift of $2 million. So the intent that we were trying to cover in the, in some of the limitations was to preserve, I mean, the big, the big issue that I was dealing with, you know, legally is, you know, a foundation that is an endowment, the corpus is supposed to be preserved. That, that's the main goal. That's the whole reason that you set up such a thing. So we were trying to put in provisions that would ensure that would happen. And that, so the 10% of earnings rolling back into the foundation was to sort of deal with an inflation factor, that they would continue to grow, and would be less risk over time, and there'd be more money available from income being generated over the long haul. Because I look at this as a, you know, 100-plus-year timeframe when, when you're looking at something like this. The, the limit on administrative expenses, I think, is maybe where your question is headed, because at the beginning, yeah, there's not going to be a lot of income, so therefore the, they won't have a lot of money for administrative expenses. So that's where I think Jeff was suggesting, I mean, there was some discussion about creating some relief at the early stages from that 10% administrative expense limitation. And the idea behind that was to allow for 80% to be for grants. So 10% rolls back in, 10% for administration, 80% for grants on a, on a twice-a-year basis. So that was the, the thinking of that, but you do have discretion to change those things around to create some relief early on, if, if that's what you want, to, to provide more money for administrative expenses and, or make a different compromise on those amounts. But I think in the long haul, when, when we have, when this foundation hopefully grows, the 10% limitation becomes, I think, more important for preserving.
If I could add just a little bit to that, you know, a lot of these restrictions and guidelines really are not, they're not legal requirements that the council has to do. They're, they're simply sort of a reflection of, of the conversations and discussions that the council has had on this over time, and, and, you know, what, what the priorities and the importance and protections that the council felt like would be important in terms of how we understood them, tried to be reflected here. This item is actually designed so that you don't have to wordsmith it tonight. Really, it's, you're authorizing the direction for, for the staff to go finalize the agreement with the foundation on, you know, obviously, it's going to have to be an agreement that they're okay with, or they don't have to agree to it. And then we'd be back here talking to you. So I think getting your feedback in, in sort of what, what your, what that policy goal and direction is from the council is what we're looking for tonight. And it's very much in tune with how this conversation has gone. I mean, I feel like we've really covered a lot of, you know, almost all the issues here, and you've, you've been pretty clear in terms of, as a group, in terms of your feelings on it and how we might work to modify these. And I think they're, they're pretty easily modified in terms between the, the foundation board members and the staff to be able to work out and finalize.
I, I concur with, with Mark in that, you know, we want to give you general direction, but just my, my two cents in is that having had a somewhat of a experience in investment advisory in my, one of my prior lives, I'm wondering if part of what's built into this can actually allow for what I would, for lack of a better term, sort of a graduated risk tolerance, so that, we want to make sure that this thing gets off the ground, and then maybe a more flexible investment policy as it matures, because one of the things I want to see is, I want to see more money coming in, and I want, I would like to see it come in early, so that, so that that, that original $2 million is, is preserved. But I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, that'll, that'll come out of it. And then I had a couple other comments and questions for Jessica. It, and I know you probably, this has been raised before, I just want to sort of reiterate it. It was brought up in emails, brought up in comments, and that is, is this, and we talked about this on Friday, candidly, you know this. I realize, I asked, shouldn't there be a pledge by the board members to each contribute contributions to this organization? And I, the fair response was that you don't want to preclude people who might have a wealth of life experience and, and put in, you know, careers and lives here, but may not have the personal capital to contribute. You don't want to exclude them. And I, I understand that, and I generally agree with it, but I would hope that you strongly encourage your, your members to be personally, you know, literally invested in the, in the, in the campaign, so that, you know, the public is going to see that. And they're going to, I think that's going to mean something. I think it'll also convey the message to other people that, you know, people who are involved in this are, they have such a depth of belief in it that they're willing to, you know, put their, literally their own, their own money in this program. And then another thing that was brought up, and I, I don't remember if we discussed it before, but I believe there was a comment about, or the suggestion about creating a subcommittee that would, would focus on fundraising, and you correct me if I misheard this, but I think the response was that everyone was going to be involved in fundraising from the, from the beginning. Is, do I, do I remember that correctly, or was there going to be a general focus on something else before you started that?
There's, our intent, because of the feedback we've received from some of the other foundations and nonprofits in the, the community, the concern was that we would be a powerful force in, in fundraising, and they really wanted us to do a slow roll on it, to really, and I think that was very helpful feedback from, for us, as we established ourselves. But our intent is to build a fundraising committee within, you know, so members of the board will be part of that, but we could also recruit members from the community to participate in the fundraising community to ultimately take that forward. So did that answer your question?
Yes, no, that's what I was looking for, just a general idea of what you're thinking or how long those lines are and what you have planned. And this is sort of an odd question I, I thought about, but I'm wondering, what, if any, outside interest from outside forces have you gotten from, whether it be estates or foundations or, or organizations outside the city of San Carlos that have said, we think that's great, you've got a foundation, please let us know how we can, how we can contribute to it? Has that happened, or is this still pretty much sort of been under wraps and, and an internal development stage?
So we've reached out to nonprofits and service organizations that serve San Carlos. So a lot, some of them are above and beyond that of just serving our specific community. And they've been very open in, in wanting to actually support us in terms of more guiding us and helping us as we establish and develop the, you know, and give back and contribute to the community. Not so much in terms of funds, per se, but more of how, let us know how we can help. So groups, including the Samaritan House, or Parca, just larger organizations have said, you know, we have these skill sets, if there's anything that we can do to help you get established and help you be successful, please do reach out.
Okay. Thank you. Sarah.
Thank you, Chair. Like Adam, I reviewed San Bruno's investment policy, and I agree with Adam that I'd like to seriously consider not investing in PG&E securities. There's another portion of the investment policy where it says the San Bruno City Council is responsible for approval of all future modifications to the investment policy statement. And I think that's a good phrase to have in there, too, that if it is changed, we should be part of that discussion. Did you have any feedback on that?
Members of our entire investment committee are present.
Yes, thank you. Hi, Brian. And I want to say I met with Jessica and Brian as well, so it was a good meeting.
Thanks, Brian. If I could ask you to identify yourself, too, for the...
Brian Best, on the investment committee. And the one thing that I would highlight on that, kind of normal best practices from what we've seen for investment policies are to be updated every year, that they're living documents, and many, many documents that I think will be our own internal policies will get regular updates to them each year. So as you ask for things like that, just be prepared that we would probably be in front of you each year asking for little changes, if that's what you would like to see.
Thank you. So it's my understanding, though, that you would be coming back to us every year to give us an annual report anyway, right? So could that be, that be part of that process? Also, I noticed that San Bruno transmits their budget to the city council every year. I'm wondering what your feedback is on that. I'm sure you've studied that.
So I'm not sure if I, we had shared this during a previous presentation, but San Bruno, their community foundation was founded in a way such that the city council was still very, very much involved, and therefore, the, even the, so their community foundation is, has to work under the Brown Act. And so there, that's, that's why the San Bruno Community Foundation and the San Bruno City Council, they're, let me step back. There's a, there's a lot of intermingling, and in fact, the city council had wanted to run the endowment on their own, but they were forced to establish a nonprofit in order to run the, as part of the settlement, to run their endowment. So the city council maintained a lot of control, and therefore, their community foundation is, is responsible for going through every single year's budgets detailed, and, you know, pretty much a lot of activities have to go through city council. We were actually given the guidance by the executive director of the community foundation there to make sure that we do not have that type of relationship, such that we can actually take activities forward without having to work under the Brown Act. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you. And I'm certainly not looking to micromanage the foundation or constantly have meetings between city council and the foundation. I just do feel kind of personally responsible for the $2 million, because it's public money. So I'm, I'm still trying to think of ways that we are accountable and that the foundation is accountable to the public. So I like all the ideas tonight about transparency and posting the minutes online and having the board meetings open. And I have full faith in you guys, that you will do a great job. I am kind of thinking, though, down the line, when I'm not up here anymore, and maybe you guys have moved on, and if, if something goes sideways in the foundation, which I hope it doesn't, are there other triggers that we need to make sure that we are guardians of that, of that $2 million? And I don't know if there's language about having oversight of board member appointments, or more frequent reporting, or if expenditures over a certain amount, you know, if all of a sudden there's a $100,000 expenditure, if that has to be approved by the city manager. I'm, I'm just looking for, if my colleagues want to chime in on any ideas there.
I guess, if I may, let the chair go first?
Thank you. I, I think that these are all good and interesting questions and discussion items, but, you know, again, that's why, for me at least, I was trying to say before, I think one of the first and foremost issues that the council is going to have to address is how much are we, how much do we want to retain control over what's happening? To use a silly example, every time we let a contract up here to, you know, rebuild the Hali 101 interchange, it involves tens of millions of dollars of public money, and we, you know, Greg makes sure there's all sorts of provisions in there to protect our interests, but there are still things that can happen, that the contractor does something that, you know, people go, well, why'd you allow them to do that? The reality is, when you have, in that sense, kind of an arms-length transaction, there's, if you have an arms-length transaction, at some point, you are betting on the other organization. You're vetting them ahead of time, but you are betting on the other organization. Now, another approach is to say, you know, the other extreme, as I said, is that we retain the money, and, and we have a group of volunteers who come forward every year and say, here's where we think the money ought to be spent, and we decide whether or not that's a reasonable thing to do. And, you know, I have my own position on that, but I think that's, that's a very critical fundamental issue that we have to, that the council has to decide where it wants to come down on, because otherwise, I don't think you can answer the other questions. One specific question I had related to San Bruno is, I thought Jim Ruane, who was the former mayor there, and I may have gotten this completely wrong, I thought he said that their arrangement between the city council and their foundation was that when grants were made, at least out of the endowment, the endowment portion, that those came back to the council under a particular kind of action. The council could reject things. They couldn't say, well, we think you should do the X instead of Y, but they could sort of look at the list and say, okay, we like 1 through 8, but that ninth organization, we don't really want to see money from the endowment used for that. That is yet another, that is another kind of nuanced way of maintaining a role and trying to influence what happens. So two-part question. Am I remembering what Jim told me correctly or incorrectly? And if I am, what's your reaction to that?
Unfortunately, I don't think I have that. I don't have an answer for you, because we didn't get into that level of granularity in terms of how the city and the, their foundation worked. However, we do have a member of our community foundations grant, on the grant team, that's actually participating in the San Bruno grant program, grant sort of review and... actually participating in the San Bruno grant program, grant sort of review and award program this year. And I hope that she will be sharing with us how they go about it and incorporating that into our process and policies going forward.
And I believe that something along those lines is accurate.
So it's not a, their council decides where to go?
It's some type of a veto...
Veto, right.
Yeah, arrangement. But again, like, a lot of the things that we've been discussing the last few minutes are triggers for making the foundation a Brown Act organization. They really are sort of just an extension of the council. They're more of a legal entity that's designed to deal with this settlement agreement that they reached. And they had to create a foundation. It was a requirement of the settlement to be able to manage the money. But it's really designed in such a way that the council has the maximum amount of control over the outcome that's legally allowable and still allowing them to be a foundation, which they have to be. So it's kind of a different arrangement.
Adam?
Thank you, Chair Ober. So I guess from mine, I'm a little concerned about trying to just put too many restrictions on the foundation and trying to, I feel like we're talking too much about sort of almost micromanaging what they're doing. And I want to give them the flexibility, I want to have the controls that we've talked about in here, but also have the flexibility to do that. And for mine, I wouldn't want them to have to be a Brown Act organization. I just think that's not sort of the approach that we've talked about doing or would want to do. I'd much rather give them some flexibility. And I do think that the returning the endowment fund, number slide nine, which I think is still up, gives us some flexibility on D, depending on how that's finalized, to address some of Sarah's concerns about if things go sideways, if things start happening wrong, that we have the ability to pull that endowment back. You know, if 10 years down the road, things happen that are sort of not in line with what the city vision is. That's just kind of my thoughts around that.
I would add one thought for the council, too, in terms of sort of a comfort level, because I certainly understand that, you know, this city's never created a $2 million endowment to a foundation. So this is a unique moment, and this is why we've taken our time and we've gone through a very thoughtful process, and we've included the public, and we've had a lot of discussions. But in terms of when we're talking about worst-case scenarios, and, you know, we can't obviously anticipate all those things, but if and when those things show up, there will still be a city council sitting here, and there'll still be a city staff sitting here. It won't be a fair disagreement between the city and the foundation if we feel that there's been some legal or ethical violation that's taken place. And I'm certain that this council, this staff, and our successors one day will very much feel the same way and utilize the resources that we have to ensure that any organization in our community is operating legally, ethically, and morally within the scope of our community. So that's something, too, that hopefully, you know, it almost goes back to where this money came from. It came from that very spirit of holding a much larger organization accountable to this community. And I think that that's not something that we came up with. I think it's something that this community has been part of this community for a long time, and I think that spirit will continue.
Ron?
Yeah, Mark. Sorry. I just, something you said about that example of San Bruno and the council having sort of a veto power. And my question, though, was that if we're going to be a beneficiary, potentially, would that not then preclude us having that kind of decision-making authority? I mean, it sounds maybe like San Bruno is a different, it's a different arrangement.
I think what you're getting at is it might be an appearance of a conflict if a future council started vetoing all expenditures, except for one expenditure that was the favorite, that was the favored one. I mean, I think that's what you're getting at. And I don't know if that would be a legal conflict, because San Bruno's foundation actually does, I mean, there were several projects that were community projects. So I'm not sure that is fatal to it, but it might raise an appearance issue.
And it certainly, as other people have said, might trigger a requirement to make them follow the Brown Act. Just to be clear, I was not proposing that because I want to do that. I was proposing it because, once again, I think one of the, and this has happened every time that this council or the prior council has had these discussions, is we have to decide how much we're letting go, okay? And we haven't done that yet. And that's clear from the discussion, and that's fine. That's one of the things we have to decide. I would like to turn our attention to trying to move forward to maximize value tonight, to give as clear a set of guidance to staff and to the foundation so that they can have a chance of drafting something and bringing it back to us for action without too much more iteration. And to sort of kick that off, and I'm loosely following what Nicole walked us through, I personally, broadly speaking, don't really even have a problem, I don't even really feel a strong desire to preserve the $2 million corpus as an endowment. And the reason for that is I don't want to see the money wasted. I want to see the money used to improve the quality of life in San Carlos. If, over the long haul, and if the best way to do that is to preserve it, fine. If the best way to do that is to spend it, not quickly, but spend it and then get a lot of other people to come in and put more money into it so it grows and the whole ability to make the quality of life better gets bigger, I'm fine with that, too. So for me, the issue of preserving the corpus is sort of a second-order issue. It's not something that I get too excited about one way or another. Safety of principal stuff, I think Jeff was sort of touching on this before. I think that's exactly the correct thing in general for a public agency to do, although as a, my wife runs the money in our family, so I just watch what she does. But I think I can make an argument that even for the city of San Carlos, we're actually too conservative, because we have money that's sitting out there that's not going to be spent for so long that investment analysts would tell you, "You really should be investing in something that has a higher return and a higher risk." But on the endowment here, I would rather that we task the foundation to come back and say, "Here is our investment policy as of today. If you give us $2 million, that's what it's going to be invested in." And we bind them to that, so that if they can go off and change their investment policy for whatever other money they raise, but as long as we're okay with their policy as of today, that's it, okay? They want to come back and petition us later, fine, to make some changes. So those are sort of the two, and I've already made the comment about, I would like them to be as transparent as possible, and I think I heard a strong commitment to do that. Those are probably the two biggest things for me. I have a number of other concerns about some of the, or ideas about some of the issues that are less important to me, but I'd like to hear what other people have to say.
Can I ask a question on your investment policy statement? Were you speaking just sort of more broadly, or you want some more granular, a more granular investment policy, saying they went to get a money manager, here's what we're going to invest in, here's the mutual funds, kind of, or whatever it may be? Or are you saying, more broadly, they're going to invest in, this is their long-term investment policy?
If I understand your question correctly, I think it's the latter. What I'm used to in an investment policy is sometimes they get into sort of classes of investments, like thou shalt not invest more than 10% in commercial paper of blah, blah, blah. But what I really want is I want to see something from the foundation that says, "This is our investment policy as of today, if you give us the $2 million." And if I find that acceptable, if enough of us find it acceptable, then we go forward with it. And they basically have committed to only apply that policy, or to apply that policy to the $2 million in less than until they come back to us and say, "Hey, we'd like to change it." And they can go off and do whatever they like with whatever other money they raise. But for us, we know what we got into, okay? But they wrote it, okay? They wrote it. We said, "That's acceptable."
Can I add, subject to annual review?
What would that mean?
Well, it would mean that, you know, they would make a report to us, and they would tell us how they feel that investment policy philosophy is working. In other words, if they're proposing to make changes to it, I think I'd like to hear about that.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yes. I'd like us to know what we get into, and if they wish to change how they want to invest the money, they come back to us either annually or whenever and say, "There's just been a major recession. We would like to change our policy."
Well, it's built in, an annual report is built in, anyway. Right.
Whether it's annual or, yes, I'd be fine with that.
I'd be okay with that.
Mark, can I ask a clarifying question? Does that mean that the foundation would then have to go out right now and get their investment manager and be advised on that grouping of funds or however you would want to see it? I feel like, would that cause a substantial delay in getting the endowment out to them?
Well, I would hope not, because that's not my goal, okay? In the course of my financial career, I've seen a number of different kinds of investment I guess what I'm saying is, it's almost like whether they need to go out and do that or whether they think they have enough that they can draft, I mean, Brian has had experience in doing this, to draft some language that we can sign off on and say, "That is acceptable to us," okay? I'd be fine with the latter. I'm not, in other words, I don't want to require them to go out and hire an investment manager at this point. I do want them to tell me how they plan on directing, at some level, the management of their investment. I mean, the city actually took a stand at that in the draft agreement that they put together. It's an approach that, it mirrors what the city does in the case of a foundation, even I know that that's not something that I would want, I expect the foundation to come back. So I'm looking to hear what the foundation has to say, and it's sort of up to them to convince us that that is a reasonable thing, okay? So is that...
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right. And then...
If I may, just one clarifying question, because you keep saying, "When this comes back to you," and we weren't anticipating this coming back to you. We were anticipating getting the direction tonight so that I could have the staff finalize the agreement, and we'd be done.
I think it needs to come back to us.
Okay.
Just why, that's why I wanted to clarify.
No, that's fine. And let's make sure, that's why I said I think we, tonight, need to give you direction, okay? And Jessica, I think you and Brian have indicated to me, it's not your preference, but you can live with that. Is there anybody else on the council who either wants to see it come back, like Adam and I do, or doesn't want to see it come back and wants...
I would like to see it come back. I think there's enough discussion.
Yeah, that was my thought all along.
Okay. Good point, Jeff. So the other point I made, and I expect that there may be more significant differences on this one, has to do with what's the council's position on protecting the corpus of the $2 million check? You know, I said that I'm actually somewhat flexible about that. I don't want to see the money wasted. I like the idea of being able to claw it back if things go in the basket. But other people may feel very differently about that. I think that's something else we need to decide, because that clearly is going to define for staff and the foundation what they're going to have to write down on a piece of paper. So how do people feel about that?
Well, I think part of my hesitation is that I'm always thinking short-term, midterm, long-term. And I think there's a period of getting established, basically of proving yourselves. And I think that the conservative approach is to be a little bit tighter in the beginning until we see some real organizational structure and start to see this evolve and start to see fundraising and that sort of thing. And then maybe we reevaluate how much of that corpus we put out at risk in the future. Because I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mark. I think that makes sense, that it's the old, "You gotta invest money to make money, spend money to make money." I completely get that. I just think that there is, because this organization is in its, you know, I was going to say infancy, it's really in its neonatal stage. I want to be comfortable with the progress, I think, before we start being a little bit more adventuresome with how we invest the money or expose the corpus to a little bit of higher level of risk in the long run.
If I may, sort of, not respond, but just comment on that. I think actually, I'm glad you made that last comment, Ron, because I think you're sort of mixing two things in there. One is the investment policy, and the other is the protection of the corpus. The corpus has to do...
I thought we were talking about the, I think they, they're intermingled. Yeah, you're right.
But having made the earlier comment, as I said, I'm less concerned about that, perhaps, than some other members of the council. I think you make a very good point about initial phase versus later phase. So even with my willingness to be more flexible on that, I certainly wouldn't have a problem if we put in language like that bullet point one on slide five, "Endowment corpus cannot be invaded or spent without council approval," subject to the fact that it wouldn't bother me if a few years from now, the foundation came back and said, "We'd like to talk about changing that," okay? But what do other people feel about that?
Never know if a big project could come along that could require a big capital improvement or capital expense.
That's true, but yeah, I would rather see them fundraise in the community for that big project. So I'm not opposed to revisiting it, but I would like to protect the $2 million for right now.
Okay. Adam?
I'd like to protect the $2 million for now as well. And I mean, I think if we're giving them potentially more flexibility in investment policy, and if we're not maybe taking the first couple of years, as Jeff mentioned, to maybe not hold them to that 10% in the administrative costs, or give them some more flexibility around some of their growth, then I think I'd rather just keep the endowment in place.
All right. Like I said, I suspect that my position, I'm sort of on the end of the spectrum there. But like I said, I certainly have no problem with what the rest of my colleagues are saying in the near term, and it's, you know, everything's subject to change.
Right.
The people...
My feeling is I agree, and I, you know, that's the last two words which are most important for now.
For now. Moving down a little bit on page five, again, where the staff proposals start getting into how, you know, what portion of earnings from the endowment can be used for administrative costs and how much must be reinvested into the endowment. Again, I don't remember if it was Jeff or somebody else said that probably for the, maybe it was Jessica even, for the first couple of years, something a little bit more flexible needs to be in place, because the foundation doesn't have any money right now, except the endowment that we're going to grant them. So what do people feel about the idea of maybe tweaking that kind of guidance back to staff and the foundation and talking about how there's, I don't know, maybe even like a fixed dollar amount for the first year or something? Fixed, you know, no more than X dollars and Y percent coming out of the, coming out of the earnings. Again, given the problem also that they're not going to know what their earnings are until the end of the first year, which means that technically they can spend $0 the first year, unless they go out and raise it.
Yeah, I think those, for like, you're talking about for number three and four on this, I think we should give them some flexibility for the first, you know, 24 months, let's say. I think Jeff was the one who mentioned that, and I'm comfortable with that. And then we can sort of apply this policy after they kind of get through that startup phase, or apply a policy that provides some, you know, better protection and some more investment into the endowment.
I'm okay with that, too. If we call it the startup phase and allow some flexibility, I think that's fine.
Jessica, can I ask you to come up and comment on whether, or Jessica or your team come up and comment on whether that works for you? I mean, that last comment I made, I'm just concerned that we could end up coming up with a rule that you're like, "Well, great, what do we do for the first year?" That was a good example of nonverbal communication. You all looked at each other, and then they said, "No, it's your turn."
So I think, in general, the concept could work. And we know, we've submitted budgets already for the first two years that were approximately $20,000 a year. I wouldn't expect our expenses to exceed that level, so that might be one data point to go by. I think we can work within that as a budgetary level. The one comment to Ron on investments, the amount we can give up, give out in grants is directly correlated to how we invest. And so to the extent we are in, you know, government-grade two-year bonds, that's 2% a year, less some expenses... a year, less some expenses, there's not a lot left to actually give out, to the extent we have more. And so, thinking through an early year is what we might be able to use for grants, that maybe there's an amount that you'll allow to set aside that could be temporarily, at least, invading into a small portion of the corpus that hopefully to grow out of, particularly if we happen to have a negative year in the market in year one. I'm not sure exactly how we would address it otherwise.
I certainly don't have a problem with that, but that's probably a detail that we'd have to work out. I was actually going to make a, a, one of my typically facetious comments about, have I got a great investment opportunity for you? But I'm not going to say that, because people might misinterpret it. But Greg, it does remind me, it, maybe it's implicit in here, I think there needs to be some kind of no self-dealing language. In other words, I, I would be concerned, I'm not saying you guys would do this, I'd be concerned if the foundation started investing in some of the companies founded by their board members, okay? I would be equally concerned if you started investing in the Mark Olbert Co., okay? When I'm on the council, because that's, that's just, that shouldn't be allowed, okay? Greg, is that something we can do?
I think they have a policy already, as I recall.
Our investment policy is far more restrictive, to the point, we're not allowed to invest in any individual securities. We're allowed to, at an initial, individual stock level, we would be fund-level investments with a low-cost mandate.
I'm glad to hear that. I'll just, again, leave you guys to think about, again, the, the sort of no self-dealing thing. That, that's sort of a separate class of things, as opposed to class of investments. I think there was sort of general sense about the administrative cost stuff, which we sort of touched on a little bit here, the first couple of years may be different, to be worked What else? Can we, Crystal, could you put up slide seven, please? The awarding of grants. There was some discussion about this, as I recall, when we were doing the Q and A. Seven B, where it talks about grants should be awarded to those projects and programs serving the greatest number of San Carlos residents. There's some similar language elsewhere in one of the other slides. When I saw that, I made a note that, I've been on the philanthropic subcommittee for several years, we don't even do that. And it's not because we ignore it, it's just that, as a practical matter, we have almost no way of calculating what that was, and it's sort of trying to substitute a mathematical formula for, for judgment, which isn't usually a good thing to do. So, I don't know how other people feel. I wouldn't mind language that said, you know, should be awarded to projects and programs that serve the San Carlos community broadly, or its interest broadly, or something like that. But, but trying to say it should go to the greatest number, I, I think would run afoul of, of, so it would prevent some really good things from happening.
Do you think seven A would cover what you're hoping to accomplish?
Yeah, actually, you mean like striking seven B and just leave it? Yeah, actually-
We would do that.
That's what I would suggest.
Yeah, I would be fine with that. Okay, that's, wow, unanimous again, how about that? See, you've got the covered with legislation, voting drives and stuff. Oh, yeah, it was on slide eight, seven G, where it talks, grant applications should be ranked by, my comment there, and maybe this is what staff meant by ranked, ranked always implies to me that you're doing some kind of mathematical analysis. I would say that those are all factors that ought to be considered. And I wouldn't mind having language that said, these things should be considered, but ranked is kind of like, takes away judgment, again. How do people feel about that? Well, you, you may be fine with what's here, that's, that's okay. We're just talking about it.
Yeah, I don't have a feeling about it either.
Okay.
I don't.
I mean, I can go either way, and I, I mean, I think if there's another way to just sort of highlight that these are, you know, criteria that should be considered, I think that's, I'm fine with that.
All right, maybe we'll, I think the general sense is something a little different, not, yeah, not hard-ranked. Let's see. Talked about that. Does any, that was sort of my notes on things that I thought we needed to get some consensus on.
G and E investment? Can we just add that?
Good one, yes. Is there anybody who would like to see the foundation invest in PG&E?
Well, and, because that could include mutual funds and other things that might be, that they would include, that they're a part of, so.
Let's, let's talk about that. I interpreted that language to be, don't, and maybe it's banned by the fact that you're not investing in individual stocks. I would not like them to invest specifically in PG&E. I don't want them to worry about they can't invest in the S and P 500 because PG&E is there.
That's fair.
Okay.
But yes, not specifically in PG&E.
Although, maybe we should allow them to invest in the marketing and communications and government affairs portion of PG&E, because that's the one part of that organization that works, does a stellar job. Okay. Anything else that people have from the diocese? Or let me ask Jessica and Nicole if there's things that you're like, hey, there needs to be guidance on X. Jeff, Greg, anything else?
No, I think we've got a good job. I think we've got enough to finalize this, so we'll try to, I'd like to bring this back. I'd like to, to get this taken care of. So, probably put this on the next agenda. Do you, are you comfortable with this being a consent calendar item, if we have an agreement that reflects all these conditions, or?
I'm fine with it being on consent, because people can always pull it off if they don't want it on consent.
Okay.
I'm okay with everybody else, I mean, I think we've discussed this quite a bit. Okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Great. Well, good job. Thank you, everybody. And by the way, really looking forward to seeing you guys succeed, okay? I mean, I, I don't know if I said this before in some of our earlier discussions, I still routinely kick myself metaphorically, because it was Cameron who brought up this idea, because, not because there's anything wrong with Cameron bringing it up, but just, when I was on the school board, one of the enormous assets that the school district had, that the city never had, was a foundation. Because you guys can do so much to help educate people and get people to understand what's going on that we can't really do. So, go forth and prosper. All right. I think that's actually, that's the last item on the agenda. Yes, Ron, you can go ahead and whack the gavel.
I was going to do you.
Go ahead. Oh, okay. We are adjourned.